That's on.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of December 16, 2024. I call the meeting to order at 5:02 PM. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
And do we have any public comments for closed session?
We do not.
Okay. We'll adjourn to closed session at 5:03 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 16th, 2024 Regular Session, beginning at 7:05. I will now pass it over to Colonel Toll to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the March on the Colors by the Orange High School Marine Corps Junior RCC Program. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
For work, march. Right, turn, march. Colors, hold. Present, colors.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Ready, strip. Ready, cut, left, turn, march. Forward, march.
3C, Report of Closed Session. Superintendent Christensen?
Well, thank you very much. President Page. Thank you. That was very, very nice of you. Closed session readout is for Item 2A, Conference with Legal Counsel. In a vote of 7-0, the Board denied the appeal of a complaint against district employees and upheld the superintendent's designees' findings. Additionally, Item 2C, Conference with Legal Counsel. The Board of Education approved the settlement agreement and general release, signed and dated by the petitioners on by the petitioners on November 4th, 2024, providing for production of records and payments of $5,000 for attorney fees upon receipt of a request for dismissal of the entire court case with prejudice in the case number listed. Including in the settlement agreement and general release is a statement of no admission of liability or wrongdoing. Both votes were 7-0. And that concludes the Report of Closed Session. Thank you.
3D, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Pelley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Now, 3E, School Spotlight, Nadia Flores-Lopez, Orange High School.
Good evening, Board President Page, Superintendent Christensen, distinguished members of the Board, and Orange Unified Cabinet Members. I am incredibly honored to have the opportunity to represent Orange High School this evening. Throughout the past 121 years of Orange High School, our school has created a rich history, filled with many memories, traditions, numerous clubs, outstanding academics, award-winning sports, and programs, but most importantly, a second home to every Panther across our campus. Orange High School has something special for everyone: with over 25 teams, the largest JROTC program in Orange County, an award-winning agricultural program, more than 25 academic and service-based clubs, award-winning coral and instrumental programs, and many other VAPA programs. In the short video, all students have been a part of this video that I have created, where we feature student leaders from all over our campus and highlight the greatness of our school. On behalf of Orange High School, I present to you this year's Orange High School Spotlight video.
Hi, I'm Justa Limon, and I'm a senior at Orange High School. I've been part of the tennis team for four years. I am the number-one singles player on the varsity team. I am proud to say that I am part of this amazing team who have worked so hard to become the champions and make it to CIF this year.
Hi, my name is Emily Prom. I'm currently a senior and this year's ASB president. ASB is about bringing diversity, leadership, and companionship for our campus. Throughout my four years here, there has been a large increase with student involvement after the COVID pandemic. There's truly a place for everyone here, as all of our ASB members are currently involved in various activities, clubs, sports, and many more.
Hola, mi nombre es Ángel Espinazar, soy actualmente senior y soy el Senior Vice President de ASB. Actualmente soy de Sorera en Hispanic Horizon. Este programa se enfoca en abrazar la diversidad cultural y crear una nueva comunidad. Un evento importante que tenemos en nuestro club para poder crear una comunidad y abrazar la cultura es la posada. En la posada, los estudiantes crean sus propias posadas y también tenemos palo profético y la escuela está llena de colores. Y también otro próximo evento que tendremos será el show de talentos, donde diferentes alumnos de diferentes culturas y orígenes pueden mostrar sus talentos y así poderlos ver. Familiares pueden llegar y poder tener más experiencia y conocimientos de otras personas y nuevos talentos. También estamos felices de ser parte de esta escuela y gracias.
Hi, my name is Ari Sova. I'm a senior and I'm one of this year's team captains.
Hi, I'm Daniel Marino. I'm a senior and I'm one of this year's captains.
And we've been in college for years. We finished off our season with our girls varsity team winning league champs at league finals for the very first time ever in OHS history. Our JV girls also placed first.
On the boys' side, our varsity team placed second place. Both varsity teams will be advancing to CIF fourth year in a row, and to end the recap of the season, we are happy to announce our athletes are awarded in the All League Selection.
We're happy with how our season ended.
And now it's try time.
Hello, my name is Guadalupe Correa. I'm a senior at Orange High School. One program that I'm a part of at school is the Sports Medicine Internship. Within this internship, many students and I get to learn how to give care to athletes while they participate within their individual sport. This program has inspired me to want to pursue this career in the future. I believe that this school has done an amazing job in preparing me for my future, and I am proud to call myself a Panther.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Fernandez, and I'm a senior at Orange High School, and I have the voter registration drive here. I was first inspired when I met a group of people that had been familiar with registering students at high schools. So I received training, I set up meetings, I set up phone calls in order to get the supplies that I needed, and then once I got permission from the school, they all really supported me heavily and they allowed me to put it in the daily announcements. So for one week at school, I had a table out in the quad registering students to vote. This includes pre-registering as well, so even students that weren't of age yet were able to register to vote. And I was inspired by the recent school board racist, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew how to register to vote. I think it's important that our students do not stay stagnant, and I hope that they are able to use their voices. I'm really grateful that my school was so supportive, and they allowed me to take this opportunity to make a change in my community.
Hi, my name is Zessi Dilla-Cruz. I am a senior and ASB treasurer here at Orange High School. I am also in the AVID program and been involved for all my four years. We are an AVID demonstration school, showing working strategies schoolwide. Our schoolwide goals are critical reading and organization. In the AVID elective, we prepare students to be college-ready in a variety of ways, including tutorials, guest speakers, and college campus tours. AVID has had a major impact in my life by obtaining great powerful skills throughout my educational journey.
Hi, my name is Asher Marino. I'm a senior and I'm this year's Panther Buddies Vice President.
Hi, my name is Melanie. I'm a senior and I'm this year's Panther Buddies Secretary. In Panther Buddies, we increase friendship activities, share experiences, and bond with students who have disabilities.
Our buddies are students here at OHS with disabilities. This allows our other students to connect with them and see the world in different perspectives. Our program is all about inclusivity and allowing the diversity of our friendships to be fun.
As a member of Orange High School, I believe that every student on campus has something special within them. Every program, every sport, everything on campus has something for every student. I think every student who was a part of this video, and I congratulate them for all of their success and leadership all over campus. Once a Panther, always a Panther.
Every single Panther in our 121 years of Orange High School has been a part of something special. Our students have had an opportunity to find their passion on our campus. While our students take pride in their individual roles, it is the collective makeup that makes Orange High School what it is. We are truly a community. In addition to the leaders we saw in our video, I would also like to recognize our Future Farmers of America program. It is unique to our school, as we are the only campus in the Orange Unified School District to have a farm. This program continues to grow student leadership, not just within Orange, but across the state of California. I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to spread some gratitude. Thank you to our JROTC cadets and their inspiring leaders for their consistent support of Panthers, OUSD, and the greater Orange community, and most importantly, for supporting each other in their leadership growth. Additionally, our Athletic Director, Ms. Severs, was a driving force in the reconstruction of our athletic conference and leagues. Her advocacy for our school and students has led to a more equitable and competitive experience for all of our Panther sports. We are lucky to have her as our Athletic Director at Orange High School, and we are excited to see what this next season holds. Lastly, I would like to give thanks to the School Board for allowing me to give this presentation tonight. Once a Panther...
Always a Panther!
Thank you very much.
Three, one, two. Looking for Ms. Glass. You good? Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Thank you so much, Nadia. Thank you for a great presentation. Now, on to Item 4, Oath of Office. A official result of the November 5th, 2024 General Election. Orange Unified School District has received the official results of the November 5th, 2024 General Election from Bob Page Register of Voters, Orange County. Superintendent Mr. Christensen will announce the official results of the General Election for the Orange Unified School District governing board members.
Thank you, President Page. The results are, for Trustee Area 3, Anna Page, with 61,736 votes. Trustee Area 4, for a shorter term, Sarah Pelley, with 6,000, sorry, 63,116 votes. And for Trustee Area 7, also a shorter-term appointment, Dr. Stephen Glass, with 64,760 votes. Additionally, Trustee Area 2, Dr. Sierra Vane, and Trustee Area 6, Matthew Thomas, were unopposed and are assuming their duties as trustees tonight as well. That concludes the readout.
4B, Madam Clerk, can you please call up the public comments?
Yes, we have two public comments. The first is Kim Trask, and she'll be followed by Rosa Oh.
Good evening, OUSD trustees, superintendent, student body representatives, and OUSD community members. I, Kim Trask, have been a resident of Orange since 2012. My oldest children attended OUSD schools for several years. I have addressed this audience many times, because I would like to have a logical argument for why I should again trust OUSD with my children. Our reason for withdrawal in 2020 is not yet corrected, and the resolution is wandering further from grasp. As five trustees take oath of office tonight, I pray that each trustee takes the oath's words to heart. I pray that each trustee has the courage to defend the U.S. Constitution, even from governors, state attorneys, state superintendents. You trustees are the parent's last line of defense when state law undermines a parent's ability to direct the health and education of their child, as afforded in the 14th Amendment. There are many assaults by California government on the 14th Amendment. AB 1955 is only one. Trustees, please protect parents' rights. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight.
Next, we have Rosa Oh. Rosa Oh. Are there people outside? Do we have people in overflow? No? Nope. Okay. Going once, going twice, Rosa Oh? Okay.
Thank you. 4B, Administration of Oath of Office. The oath of office will be administered to board members Dr. Sierra Vane, Anna Page, and Matthew Thomas for their term of office 2024 through 2028. The oath of office will also be administered to board members Sarah Pelley and Dr. Stephen Glass for their term of office from 2024 to 2026.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. So everyone knows, all trustees were officially sworn in last Friday, December 13th, so that they could assume their offices and participate in closed session. This evening swearing in is for the benefit of the public and is ceremonial. I have the benefit of swearing in Trustee Area 2 Representative Dr. Sierra Vane, so if you would like to join me up at the podium, we will do that. Want to be on that side? You're good. Cameras ready? Awesome. Raise your right hand, please, and state after me. I state your name.
I, Sierra Vane.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. We are doing the swearing in by trustee area number, so that was trustee area number 2. Trustee area number 3 is Anna Page. So Anna is being sworn in tonight by Ruby Hewitt. She is... Ruby is a former Orange USD student board member and very popular. Ruby is a proud graduate of El Medina High School, class of 2023, and a current student at UC Santa Barbara. She was part of the first group of student board members who worked closely with trustee Page to prepare for board meetings. Her experience on the board was so impactful that it inspired Ruby to change her intended major from psychology to political science. Ruby exemplifies how student board members can truly make a difference, and we are honored to have her here today to swear in trustee Page. Thank you for being here.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Anna Page.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. Precious. Very smiling. Next is trustee area four, Sarah Pelley. And Sarah is being sworn in by Ann Schrader, retired Orange Unified educator. Ann Schrader is a retired OUSD educator who served our community for 38 years, 19 of those as an elementary school principal at Crescent Primary Villa Park Elementary Panorama in Cambridge. Ann has touched the lives of thousands of OUSD students, teachers, staff members, and families. Sarah is asked here tonight not only because Ann was her first principal, because she has also been a mentor and a friend for all these years. When Sarah started her teaching career in 1989 at Crescent Primary, Ann told her she would make a great principal someday. 19 years later, when Ann was retiring, Sarah arrived late to the retirement party having just signed her contract as an elementary school principal. While neither of them predicted Sarah becoming a school board trustee, there is no doubt in Sarah's mind that Ann's early support and encouragement has influenced her career and her decision to continue to serve on the OUSD community. So, thank you.
When have you ever known a principal to pass up an opportunity to say a few things? I feel old after hearing all of that. But I'm very honored to have been asked to swear Sarah in, but there are three other people here that were with Sarah from the very beginning, colleagues, teachers at Crescent Primary when she first began, so will you ladies come up, please? We look pretty good. Diana Schaefer, Janet Pereira, and Sandy Jones. Okay. I state your name.
I, Sarah Pelley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. All right.
They used to call me the baby when I was first hired because I was the youngest one, but I don't feel young right now.
Mike needs to go over by Sarah.
And she's being joined by her husband, Mr. Mike Pelley. And next up for trustee area six, Matthew Thomas. Matthew is being sworn in by Ellen Johnson, retired OUSD transportation manager. Ellen served, yeah. Give it up for Ellen. Ellen served Orange Unified starting in the classroom as an instructional assistant working her way up to transportation manager. She retired in 2016 with 30 years of service. She has several relatives still working in different departments throughout Orange Unified. Ellen served on the local Chapter Two Board of the California Association of School Transportation Officials, or CASTO. She also served on several committees within CASTO and the National Association for Pupil Transportation. So, welcome, Ellen, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I promised we'd be on this side so that your family can see. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matthew Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Just my family can come up here, please? Brothers, wives, who all attended Orange Unified and graduated from Orange Unified? Gamas. Once a panther, always a panther. And my first grade teacher, Mrs. Houston, is here. Ellen?
And next up for trustee area seven, Dr. Stephen Glass. Dr. Stephen Glass is being sworn in by Mr. Robert McDonald. Mr. McDonald is a U.S. Navy Vietnam veteran, current president of the Ninth and Tenth Calvary Association, Buffalo Soldiers Greater Los Angeles Chapter, a former student body president at Los Angeles Harbor College, a former president of the Cal State Fullerton Alumni Association, and former California State University statewide alumni president. He served on the 17-member State Board of Governors of the California Community College System, where he created and chaired the Board's Veterans Affairs Committee. Mr. McDonald has devoted many years to noteworthy public service at the federal, state, and local levels, to include service as a Veterans Administration appointee to the Council on Minority Veterans, as chairman of the first-ever Department of California Veterans Affairs Black Veterans Summit, as the Alpha Pi Alpha Fraternity National Chairman, excuse me, National Committee Chair on Veterans Affairs, a member of Veterans Alliance of Orange County, and Orange County Veterans Advisory Council Chair Emeritus, amongst many other appointments. Thank you for joining us this evening.
I state your name.
I, Stephen Glass.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Get the group, get the wife, get the wife.
Dynamite.
Can I get, can I get my brothers? And all, can I get all D9? All D9 up here, all D9? All D9?
All D9. You all right, back there, my brothers? Okay, all right. Make sure, make sure. We got everybody? Yeah? All right. We can do that.
All eyes real quick right here, ready, one, two, three. Okay, anyone else?
Okay, I think I got y'all right now.
He asked for one of the entire room and everyone in it, so. I don't usually do .5 on people, but.
Where's Brother Craig?
Doing fine, doing fine.
Congratulations to you.
Okay, I'm not leaving. Okay, I'm not leaving.
We're going in trustee order.
Come on the other side, we saw him here over there.
The shortest one is in the middle, that's not right. That is not right.
All right, congratulations, everyone. Five A, annual organizational meeting. Education Code Section 35143 requires the governing board of each school district to hold the annual organizational meeting. In a year in which a regular election for governing board members is conducted, the meeting shall be held on a day within a 15-day period that commences with the second Friday in December following the regular election. Organizational meetings in years in which no regular election for governing board members is conducted shall be held on any date in December, no later than December 20th.
So, Madam President, if you could start the annual organizational meeting with the election of a board president?
Thank you. Five B, president at this time, are there any nominations for the office of president of the Board of Trustees?
Yes, I would like to nominate Chris Erickson.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Erickson, do you accept?
No, no, I'm kidding. I do.
Okay, so now we have a nomination, now we have a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, motion passes 7-0, congratulations.
As vice president, former president, that is for you to memorialize your time here as president, says Anna Page, OUSD Board President, 2024. Says Anna Page, OUSD Board President, 2024.
Thank you, and I want to thank you, Trustee Page, for serving as president this year. You stepped up during a really crucial transition from a chaotic period and brought calm sensibility, allowing the board, the district, and the community to regain a sense of normalcy and decency, so we could get back to focusing on moving Orange Unified forward. I know with children, a full-time job, and being a PhD candidate, it wasn't easy, and we're really grateful for your service. And thank you to my colleagues for entrusting me with this position, and I look forward to many productive and respectful meetings. So, moving on to five C, election of board vice president. At this time, are there any nominations for the office of vice president for 2025?
I would like to nominate Andrea Yamazaki.
Okay. Do we have any additional nominees? Okay, Andrew, Trustee Yamazaki, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Good. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Trustee Yamazaki.
Thank you.
All right. And. At this time, are there any nominations for the office of clerk of the Board of Trustees?
I would like to nominate Trustee Page.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Trustee Page, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the appointment of Anna Page to the board office of clerk for the 2025 calendar year?
I'll move it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Trustee Page. You are now the fourth clerk. All right, so, moving on. I have to get used to this, sorry. Appointment of the secretary to the board. Orange Unified Bylaw 9122 states, "The Board of Education shall appoint the superintendent to serve as a secretary to the board. The secretary to the board shall be responsible for maintaining an accurate and complete record of all board proceedings." It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint the superintendent, Mr. Michael Christensen, to the position of secretary of the board. Mr. Christensen, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
All right, moving on to five F, the board committee appointments. It is, Board Bylaw 9100 provides that the Board of Education shall designate board representatives at the annual organizational meeting. Board Bylaw 9140 further provides that when making such appointments, the board shall clearly specify the authority and responsibilities of the representatives, including but not limited to reporting back to the board regarding committee activities and/or actions. Additionally, board representatives shall not exercise the authority of the board without prior board approval. It's necessary that the board approve appointments for the 2025 calendar year for the following committees. The Orange City Schools Coordinating Committee, and we'll need three representatives for that. Legislative Coalition, we'll need three representatives for that. And the District Nominating Committee Representative to serve on the Orange County Committee on School District Organization, we'll need one representative and one alternate. For the Orange City Schools Coordinating Committee, do we have volunteers?
I'd like to volunteer.
Okay.
Can you clarify when they meet so that our?
I believe it's once a month, and I would have to ask, I believe it's on Monday, but it kind of varies. All right, that would be Monday, 5:00 every other month. Okay. And it will rotate from the district office to various city offices as well. The location.
I will volunteer.
Okay, Matt Thomas? Do we have a third representative or third volunteer? Anyone? I will volunteer for that position as well. Okay. And for Legislative Coalition, they meet. You know, probably know.
The first Wednesday of every month at 11:00 AM.
Okay, so we need three representatives for that. Do we have three volunteers?
I'd like to volunteer.
Okay, Trustee Yamazaki?
I'll volunteer.
Trustee Vane?
I'll volunteer as well.
And Trustee Page. Okay. And finally, the District Nominating Committee Representative to serve on the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. And I. I actually don't have a time where they meet. So, does anybody?
I believe they're. I believe they meet as necessary.
Okay, so it's, okay. Do we have a volunteer and a alternate?
I volunteer.
Okay. Trustee Glass? Do we have somebody to be an alternate?
I can be an alternate.
Okay. Trustee Pelly? Okay. All right, so I have for Orange City Schools Coordinating Committee, trustees Pelly, Erickson, and Thomas. For Legislative Coalition, we have trustees Yamazaki, Vane, and Page. And for District Nominating Committee Representative to the Orange County Committee on School District Organization, we have trustee Glass and as an alternative, trustee Pelly. Do I have a motion to approve those appointments?
I'll move it. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations to all of our new members. Okay, moving on to item G, approval of the 2025 calendar of regular board meetings. And I did want to make a comment on this item. To better serve the community and to provide opportunities for board members to attend school functions and related events, it is proposed that the board approve a calendar for 2025 and adopt the specific dates for the regular meetings as listed below. And should the need arise for additional meetings, placeholder dates are proposed as follows. But I also want to just mention that I understand that this calendar looks a bit different than it has in the past. Our regular business meetings are varying on Thursdays and Wednesdays because we have two college professors now on our board and a PhD candidate on the board, all of whom have night classes occasionally, so we've accommodated their schedules. Additionally, we have a lot of extra meetings on the calendar, so I wanted to explain why. For six years that I've been on the board, there's been a reluctance by some members to hold anything other than the monthly business meetings, and during COVID, that's all we really could do. These regular business meetings are the only opportunity, because of the Brown Act, for seven board members to discuss anything. So, it's not really conducive to a deep discussion or a real understanding of a lot of these issues. And so, I think that when the only time that we have to discuss is at a business meeting and we only have a short period of time to talk about it, that this doesn't necessarily produce the best outcomes. And with the majority of our board being new, I think we have an obligation to do more. I think if we're to expect our staff to push themselves and engage in professional development, that we too should do all that we can to push ourselves. Not every meeting, so staff is aware, will involve the entire staff. For instance, our January date is going to be a board retreat, a governance workshop, where we will discuss individual and group goals and how we want to build a strong governance team and foundation that we can work on building trust and cohesion amongst our board. Of course, it's always open to the public, but it really will, it won't be a regular business meeting, and it will involve minimal staff. The other additional meetings that we have scheduled will be study sessions or workshops on various topics such as academic data, student achievement, LCAP, facilities, and campus safety, and so on. This will give us the opportunity as a board to dig deeper into areas we need to be able to have time to discuss, and I think that that will help us as a board moving forward, and it will help the culture of the board moving forward, even when we're not here. So, that's the goal. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the regular board meeting calendar as noted for the 2025 year. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question about. June 5th is a Thursday. I was wondering if you wanted to keep it consistent and just make it all Wednesdays in the first half of the month, as opposed to having it all Wednesdays and then jump to a Thursday, I mean, half, first half of the year. I'm sorry, misspoke.
Any discussion?
I was just wondering if somebody would, just so that it's consistent to the public and to our staff. I don't know if anybody has any problems with moving it to the 4th? Want to bring your calendars out?
Yeah.
A week after that.
That's fine, if anybody wants to check their calendar, I'm open to whatever you want to do. I know everybody did check these dates, I think, beforehand, and we know that they're open. So, I will leave it to you. Does anybody want to change them, or do we want to leave these as they are since we've already all checked our calendars? And we do have a motion on the floor. Okay?
Just wondering, then we can amend the motion if we want to, but it's just a thought. To make it easier for everyone to remember.
Okay. Nobody is speaking up, so we do have a motion on the floor. Why don't we vote on the motion, and if it fails, then we can address that. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. All right, so we'll adopt this calendar for regular board meetings. Next, we have announcements and acknowledgements, and we have the school spotlight on Parkside Educational Center. And to present, we have Principal Lucas and some staff members and parents as well. So, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Julie Lucas, and I'm beyond excited to be here. And I want to thank all of the Orange Unified Esteem Board members, the student board members, Superintendent Christensen, all of the community that's here. And we're just proud and excited to provide information for everyone here and spotlight on our programs at Alternative Ed Parkside Education Center. We have put together a slideshow that's brief and a video that was created collaboratively. I feel like I'm standing on my tippy toes here. Sorry. With the OUSD Communications Department. And I stand here humbly with teachers and parents, and I'm just so beyond proud to be here and just brag a little bit about what we do. So, our first slide here, we were winning the most improved attendance two times in a month, and we are very proud of ourselves, and we're patting ourselves on the back here. Parkside does consist of, I call it a quilt. It's a wonderful quilt of many unique, different programs. We have special ed teachers, we have general ed teachers, we have special ed staff, independent study teachers. We span K through adult, so we are the one school in the district that spans K through adult, and we just love our jobs every single day. This quote really embraces our vision and mission. If you don't understand anything until you learn it more than one way, and that's what we do. We think outside of the box, and we provide a service to all of the families and people in Orange Unified, and again, we're super proud to do that. This slide here just shows that the interconnectedness of Parkside. We rely on every single department in Orange Unified. We can't do our jobs without you. We, we work with the community, we work with our SROs, we go to the street fair and laugh and have fun, and we work with the Elks Club, and I'm probably forgetting people, but at the end of the day, it's that really special moment when our students graduate and walk across Fred Kelly that is just really special. So, what are the programs at Parkside? One of our programs, two of our programs are special ed programs, Adult Transition and a program called Aspire. ATP is the acronym for the Adult Transition, and the focus is on community-based instruction, life skills, and independent living. Aspire is a, is a program focused on pro-social behaviors and academic completion and social emotional skills. Both of those programs are school placement only through an IEP, and the students are working on their individual goals and getting services. For our special ed programs for adults with disabilities, it spans the ages of 19 to 22. And then the other program, Aspire, is for our high school students that are needing social emotional support and behavioral support. And picture here is at the end of the year when our ATP students do very rigorous interviews with our teachers, some of the hardest interviews I've ever seen, actually. Harder than the one I went through, and then graduation. So, they're very proud to go through that process. New to our programs at Parkside is Parkside's Alternative Success School, otherwise known as PASS. So, it's an alternative to suspension program for our students in Orange Unified, grades eight to 12. It's a collaboration with many departments, but specifically with Student Community Services. It provides students an alternative, other means of correction for the days of suspension for violations of Ed Code 48900. It allows the students to spend a time at school in a quiet, structured environment and complete the work they, they would not have completed, so the education continues. The district is able to collect ADA for these days, and it provides restorative lessons to students to help teach them social skills and problem-solving skills to avoid further disciplinary infractions. It was started April of last year, and these are just some statistics on the number of days recovered from last year, so it was 113 days. And not a mathematician, but these are some estimates of what was recouped for the district for PASS completers, 42 last year, I'm sorry, 34 last year. And then this year to date, and at this juncture, might have a couple more that we didn't update this one slide, but there's 116 students that have recovered ADA days. So, again, we have 50 completers so far to this point. So, really proud of PASS. It provides a great service to the district. So, Edge Virtual Academy. Edge Virtual Academy is the school's online school. It is a traditional school. It's virtual. It is a curriculum that has been board adopted. It has highly credentialed teachers that provide instruction online. We have the program kind of broken into two parts, Kinder through sixth, which is synchronous instruction with one teacher, basically in the morning hours, 8:45 to about noon, with in-person support that we've started this year, Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 12:30 to 2:00. Our, our school does use iReady to support Kinder through eighth in the reading and math strands, and then through grade 11 for our multilingualistic learners. When we segue to the secondary level, there's asynchronous Apex classes and scheduled teaching per subject with content teachers and in-person support pretty much any, any day, 8 to 2, scheduled with teachers. So, we see students coming and going at all times to get that support. At Edge Virtual, we have AP classes, honors classes, CTE classes. We have Seal of Biliteracy, Golden Seal, early, early college courses. We're A through G compliant, NCAA compliant. We have the S-Back given, and we have students, when we look at our stats, about 65% of our graduates from last year went to either a two-year or a four-year college. So, we, we're very rigorous, and we're very proud of the work we do there. Next is our homeschool, and we have a unique program in homeschool. We have K through eight, and it's an independent study model, so it's not virtual. Our homeschool teachers work with parents, again, with curriculum that has been board adopted, and a lot of customer support, meaning they're working with the parents and providing that instruction for the parent to be able to help their student at home. There's iReady support, in-person support scheduled at any time. Our teachers are very flexible. So in conclusion, we had the opportunity to have many of our parents in a video and kind of explain and brag about what we do. Welcome to Orange Unified Alternative Education Programs. At Parkside, we're the proud home of OUSD's two main independent studies programs, Homeschool K-8 and Edge Virtual Academy K-12. Edge Virtual Academy K-12 is our largest program at over 300 students with highly qualified teachers. Elementary students have a structured daily schedule with teacher-led instruction in math, language arts, sciences, and social studies with optional intervention daily. The virtual instruction provides the same learning that a student in a traditional in-person school would have. Secondary students have a flexible schedule that uses the district-approved online curriculum Apex. There are daily instructional offerings and check-ins with a focus on specific content to support the online learning.
Orange Unified has really created an amazing option for the parents, and they're very lucky to be able to have the Edge Program. The Edge Program is going to provide for their kids unlike any other online program that I've seen, and I think that we're really lucky that the Edge Program continues to grow and evolve and become an amazing place for all students to be.
We were ready to do homeschool. I was ready to roll up my sleeves and be the teacher. And fortunately, we found Edge at Parkside, and a lot of that teaching work was done for us with an amazing program and amazing teachers who I could partner with. And instead of having to be the leader in that, I get to be a coach, I get to be a partner, I get to really encourage my daughter and help her grow in the ways that she really needs to.
Homeschool is an elementary program that supports families electing to educate their student at home with a fully credentialed, experienced teacher to provide all curriculum and support.
In Orange, we have teachers assigned to these parents that are homeschooling, and we give them assistance. We guide them in the curriculum, we guide them in how to teach certain subjects, and give them assistance in that way.
It was kind of a surprise for us coming into the homeschool program. We didn't know it existed. And when we came across the homeschool program, we were just surprised that there was a teacher to walk alongside us, help get work together, help with grading, answer questions. And we just fell in love with it, and we just love the flexibility of it. We love that curriculum is provided and that we just, it feels like there's a team supporting Colin when he needs it most.
Every morning, it's the same routine. We get up, we usually, we will stay in bed a little bit, and we'll read right before we start having breakfast. We'll come out, everybody does what they need to do, and then we'll come to the kitchen, do breakfast, and then they'll start, he'll start doing his schoolwork. And usually, he's the one choosing what subject he wants to do. And here we are, two years in, and we're happy. I wouldn't change it.
At Parkside, our caring, qualified staff takes pride in providing small learning environments to assist students' individual learning, social, and emotional needs. At Parkside, every day is a chance to explore, grow, and succeed.
That was fantastic. Thank you. And thank you for all that you do to address the individual needs of our students. Does anybody else, have any questions or comments?
I do. First and foremost, I really do have to thank Ms. Lucas for coming up here and speaking today and presenting what Parkside Education Center is all about. You know, speaking with my fellow peers, we find that one size does not fit all. And I really do thank you for offering our students alternatives to mainstream education and offering our students, our children, a second chance. And I also have to thank you again as a former assistant principal at Villa Park High School for continuing the great work that you're doing at Parkside Education Center. So thank you once again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item 6B, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. Thank you, President Erickson. First time anybody's said that.
Ever.
Ever. A couple of things, announcements that I need to make. Number one, these seats that are all reserved, those people are gone. If you'd like to move closer to the action, feel free. If not, that's fine, but. Some of you may be aware of this, and some of you possibly not. Our former mayor of Orange, Mark Murphy, passed away Friday evening, very suddenly. Mark was Orange through and through. He was born at St. Joe's, attended Orange High School, graduated with the class of 75. He played basketball, water polo, swimming, was just an all-around person who loved Orange, cared about Orange. I had the opportunity to work with him before when we were working on our bond program, Measure S, and having other meetings with him for other things representing the city. So just very sad to report his passing, want to acknowledge him this evening and his family, his wife. He's survived by his wife, Vicki, and his mother, Lois. So just if I could ask you for a moment of silence, just to think about Mark and remember what great things he did for this city. Thank you for that. And then I wish, it was kind of fitting that tonight we had everything about Orange High School. But so in keeping with that, you know, there's a saying about, if, once you're a Marine, you're always a Marine. That also applies to Panthers. And what's the saying? Once a Panther...
Always a Panther.
That's right. So let's remember Mark with that, that thought, right? So additionally, and unfortunately, this afternoon, about 3 o'clock, one of our small special education buses had an accident. They were sideswiped on Santiago Canyon Road near Red Rock Canyon. The two students that were on the bus and the driver were transported to hospitals. Parents were notified, they're with their students. We're not sure exactly what happened. This is what we're told. The CHP are investigating, and we're, of course, cooperating with them. So just if you go home and see something on the news tonight, I saw the video that Channel 7 had, and it's very disturbing. There were no fatalities. The students, I can only talk about students in the bus and the driver. I don't know about the passengers in the SUV. But our folks are getting taken care of, so just so that you're aware of that. And then finally, I'm back to work for a period of time. Thank you very much. I'll pay you later. Anyway, some people who don't know me may wonder what, you know, kind of what's my north star? What am I concerned about? How am I going to run, make decisions for what we're doing here right now? And while I don't know exactly what the next few months hold, I will tell you that everything that we do will be focused on student achievement, fiscal accountability, and communication. And that's about all that I can promise, but I guarantee you that that's what we'll be focused on. I look very much forward to working with your new board, who you just placed tonight, or five of the seven, and I'm very excited to be here. So thank you for having the confidence and faith in me to put me in this position. So thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Board President's Report. That is me. What a difference two years makes. That's all I can say. What a difference this community makes. It's an exciting time to be in Orange Unified, and I feel so incredibly optimistic to be working with such an accomplished group of board members, each of whom is individually connected deeply to the success of our district and to the students and families that we serve. For the first time since I can remember, we actually have seven members who each have that personal connection, whether it's as a parent, as a parent of former students, alumni, former employees. And everyone here, I think, has volunteered within Orange Unified, and that's a really remarkable thing, and it's something that we should be really proud of. And I want to thank and commend our Orange Unified community who overwhelmingly supported positive change in this district. We thank you, and we're very excited about it. Additionally, we have the opportunity to work beside an excellent and accomplished Superintendent, Michael Christensen, who I want to thank profusely for coming on board to lead the district and to be a crucial part of this governance team during our transition to a permanent superintendent. His decades of experience in Orange Unified include Facilities Director, Chief Business Officer, Deputy Superintendent, and Superintendent. And after retiring in 2017, he continued that service to public schools around the state, including working as a consultant in Orange Unified related to finance and facilities. So we're really fortunate to have you on board alongside an incredibly talented cabinet, and thank you to all of you. And many thanks to our Executive Assistant Karen Eric for her tireless work keeping us in order. Last week, all seven board members, imagine that, and members of the cabinet attended a four-day California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference. School Board members and administrators from around the state come together to learn about critical issues, innovations, and opportunities facing public education in California and to learn from each other's experiences. We also celebrate successes in innovative programming, and I want to congratulate our Special Education Department under the leadership of Dr. Sue Singh for receiving the 2024 California School Boards Association Golden Bell Award for its inclusive strategic plan program. It's a tremendous honor and very well deserved. So thank you for your service and congratulations. The CSBA conference is a time when we can all study effective governance. And as I said before, I've been on this board for six years, and for most of that time, I will say collaborative and cooperative governance wasn't really the focus. Study sessions, board retreats, and governance training were not the norm for this board. And when I speak to other board members at these conferences, we were the outliers when it came to that, and we now have an opportunity to change that. And, you know, creating an inspiring, safe, and challenging academic environment for students is a powerful mission and one that we are all dedicated to. We have to make data-informed decisions that are oriented toward the future, and that needs to be alongside our educational professionals and our engaged community members and parents. And we hope to do that and have some in-depth discussions and some really provocative and positive discussions at the school board study sessions and workshops. And we will always, as Superintendent Christensen said, prioritize student learning, safety, and well-being. So I do, again, want to thank the community for your dedication to this district, and I really want to thank the rest of my board members, and I look so forward, I'm just, I'm so excited and so optimistic to work with all of you. I know I've said that before, but I really just, all of you are incredible people. And I want to, again, thank our teachers, thank our employees for hanging in there and for all that you do. And I hope everybody has a nice winter holiday break. Thank you.
Good eye.
Can you?
Could I add one more item?
Maybe.
Madam President?
You sure can.
Well, thank you. I'm old, and I forget things, so I'll play that card at least once. One of the things I didn't mention that this afternoon I was able to take part in, Student and Community Services has a Warm Hands, Warm Hearts program. Some of you may be familiar with it, most of you probably are not. I was not. So it's something that has been developed recently. What they do is they gather presents, Christmas presents, for McKinney-Vento students, foster youth, and families in need. Last year, they collected around 500, and I went into the room and saw these bags full of gifts. It's just phenomenal. This year, there were over 600 bags donated for families. They'll be picked up tomorrow, they'll go out to all the schools in the district because there are people that have needs throughout our district, not just at certain schools. It's everywhere. And we don't want to embarrass anybody. The idea is to be able to give them something to celebrate, and I just want to celebrate Student and Community Services and their work in doing that. And that's part of, you all may remember this when I used to say this, Orange Unified is a district of excellence. And we're a district of excellence because of the people that work here, the people that care about this district, the people that live in the community. And, you know, as a point of note, our trustees, while this is not common in most districts, our trustees are elected by all the voters in the district. They represent all the schools in the district, all the students in the district, all the communities. It doesn't matter if it's Anaheim Hills, Garden Grove, Santa Ana, Orange, Villa Park, they represent all of you. And so I think that is something that makes us really, really special and a district of excellence. So thank you, and I'm sorry to cut into whatever next you want to do.
Oh, that was excellent.
I thought that was important.
Thank you. It was very important. Thank you. And thank you to all the staff that administers that. It's a big job, and it's such an important, important thing. So thank you. Next, we have Proclamation, National School Psychology Awareness Week. This item was originally on the agenda for the November meeting but was moved to this meeting, and I would like to throw it over to Sarah, Trustee Pelly, to go ahead and do this. Yep?
Thank you. That was fantastic. Yeah. Thanks. We're going to need more room for all the gifts and flowers we're being adorned with tonight. Thank you, guys. So we wanted to do this at the last meeting, but as we've heard, we didn't do that. We shortened our meeting a little bit. But it's my honor to tell you a little bit about our amazing school psychologists. The Board of Education was official, will officially proclaim November 11th through November 15th, 2024, as National School Psychology Week to celebrate the impactful work school psychologists and other dedicated educators do to support the mental health and academic success of every student. In recognition of National School Psychology Awareness Week, Orange Unified expresses its gratitude to our school psychologists for their expertise, commencement, and essential contributions to our students, our schools, and our community. School psychologists play a critical role by providing direct support and interventions to students, consulting with teachers, families, and other mental health professionals to develop effective support strategies, advising school administrators to enhance school-wide practices and policies, and partnering with community providers to ensure students have access to needed services. The Board is thankful for their invaluable contributions all year. And I'd like to present this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me just say a few words. Good evening, Board President Erickson, members of the Board, Superintendent, Cabinet, and Community Members. On behalf of the school psychologists present with me here tonight and the rest of our school psychologist group, we have about 36 school psychologists in the district, we would like to accept a proclamation with deepest appreciation. We definitely thank the Board and our fearless leader, Dr. Singh, for the continued support and recognition of all the hard work and dedication of our school psychologists in the district to better support the needs of all students. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Sarah. Thank you, guys, all of you for what you do. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the valuable work that you do. We... Okay. Moving on to item 6E. Sorry. Hold on. Orange Unified School District has initiated an awards program to honor the valuable partnership that exists between community organizations in the district. As described in the district's strategic plan under Focus 2.0, dedicated and engaged communication, the district seeks to build and maintain strong educational, university, business, and community partnerships to cultivate deep-rooted connections with stakeholders. A special visit was made to First Five, Orange County, to personally honor them with OUSD's prestigious Community Partnership Award. Trustee Page, would you like to say a few words about First Five, Orange County?
Thank you, Madam President. So First Five, Orange County is dedicated to improving the well-being of...
Thank you so much. Thank you for the valuable work that you do. Okay, moving on to Item 6E. Sorry, hold on. Orange Unified School District has initiated an awards program to honor the valuable partnership that exists between community organizations in the district. As described in the district's strategic plan under Focus 2.0, dedicated and engaged communication, the district seeks to build and maintain strong educational, university, business, and community partnerships to cultivate deep-rooted connections with stakeholders. A special visit was made to First Five Orange County to personally honor them with OUSD's prestigious Community Partnership Award. Trustee Paige, would you like to say a few words about First Five Orange County?
Thank you, Madam President. So First Five Orange County is dedicated to improving the well-being of young children and families. And each year, First Five Orange County invests in more than $20 million in programs throughout. And some of the programs, like all of you may be familiar with, such as home visiting for pregnant individuals and new parents, quality childcare, ensuring that children receive well-child visits and developmental screenings, and some of the new programs that we have online, such as Kid Builders. A large portion of a lot of our funding actually goes out to kindergarten readiness programs at 25 school districts and that have a kindergarten population. So they fund our early learning specialists, like the ones that we have here today. The kindergarten readiness initiative is intended to support four main focus areas. It's early childhood programming integration in the K-12 system, data system integration, including EDI and screening registries, as well as family and community engagement. And so that's kind of the role that I play at First Five Orange County, is supporting family engagement, mainly creating different toolkits to support not just school districts, but city initiatives to create child-centered communities so that they thrive and are prepared for kindergarten. So those are just some of the initiatives that we have, in addition to so much more on the health side. And I just wanted to share some words of gratitude from the district to be able to recognize First Five. Thank you.
Okay. And we will have Renee Ibarra and Elena Rodriguez present on the side of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, President Erickson, second person to say that. Esteemed Board of Trustees, new and continuing, and to our Superintendent Christensen and our Executive Cabinet, thank you for having us here tonight. It is truly my honor to reinstitute our community partnership recognition, to honor valuable partnerships that exist between our community organizations and our district. We, as educators, know firsthand the true benefit of building connections with the wealth of resources in our community to benefit the educational experience of all our students in OUSD. Under Focus Area 2.0, dedicated and engaged communication in our current strategic plan, Initiative 2.5 states, "Build and maintain strong educational, university, business, and community partnerships," and to cultivate deep-rooted connections with stakeholders. So once a trimester, we would like to take the opportunity to highlight at least one community partner to be recognized by our Board of Education. Organizations are to be nominated based on their contributions in assisting the district in advancing one or more of the following focus areas, either in excellence in academics and leadership, dedicated and engaged communication, genuine wellness and safety, or efficient utilization of fiscal capital. So it is my honor to share that the First Five of Orange County was selected for this recognition. And now I'd like to introduce Renee Ibarra, our Early Learning Coordinator, to share a few words on why they were selected.
Thank you. First Five of Orange County has been an integral support system for our early learning programs in OUSD. Funding and guidance through our contract has been able to allow us to have the most robust Learning Link program in all of Orange County, reaching over 300 children and families so far this year alone, with opportunities for children to learn and grow alongside their caregivers every week. Participation in the Learning Link program also provides a bilingual, interactive book and activity bag that children and their families can check out each week to continue their learning and engagement with family members throughout the week at home. Providing our families this earliest connection to OUSD creates a positive relationship that improves developmental, learning, and health outcomes for our youngest learners through early intervention facilitated by our monthly parent workshops, newsletters, and Community Resource Fair each spring. First Five Orange County also provides funding and data analysis for the Early Development Index, which is a survey done every three years by kindergarten teachers throughout Orange County and the state of California. This survey provides data on kindergarten readiness in five important areas of child development. And the data is analyzed and allows us, allows us to plan our programming to meet the needs of our students and improve kindergarten readiness throughout our community and district. This data has been tied very closely to future academic achievement for students as they grow in elementary school. And we're excited that this coming year, we will have new data to analyze as well. On October 2nd of this year, at the First Five Commission Board meeting, our team was proud to honor First Five Orange County as recipient of our first Community Partnership Recognition Award for the 2425 school year. We presented the award to Madam Chairman Jackie Philbeck, Christina Blevins, our Early Learning Senior Program Officer, and Jennifer Shepherd, OUSD's Early Learning Consultant, for their tireless efforts and support for our district and community of young learners. We consider ourselves fortunate to have a partnership with First Five Orange County that truly embodies the Orange Unified edge and exemplifies our district core values of integrity, equity, respect, and excellence. We look forward to a fruitful partnership for many years to come. Thank you.
Any questions? You're pretty clear? Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item 6F, Board Recognition. You've got the Edge Employee of the Month, Tracy Nib, for you, for you to present.
Absolutely. Thank you. And we are excited this evening to celebrate our You've Got the Edge Employees of the Month. Awards are given each month during the school year to employees who exemplify one or more of the district's core values. They are awarded with a customized OUSD Tumblr, gift cards from our valued partners, Schools First Federal Credit Union and the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation, and a framed Employee of the Month certificate, lanyard, and pin. Additionally, their portraits are displayed in the external display case outside the boardrooms. We have a video this evening to highlight each of our honorees, and we're going to recognize the theme of Panthers even with our video, so enjoy.
Hello. I am very proud to congratulate our You've Got the Edge Employees of the Month for November 2024. First, we had the honor of surprising a team of two, Colonel Mark Toll and Staff Sergeant Carlos Mata Barajas, who lead the JROTC program at Orange High School. Principal Cheryl Anderson Glass had this to say about the duo. These two staff members are an integral part of our school community. The opportunities they provide to our students at Orange High School are exceptional. The leadership development of over 200 students is seen each and every day in the level of support and respect they display. These two leaders share a commitment to the community to ensure support of all events and to create a service-above-self mentality for the youth they represent. The remarkable character of both these instructors has developed one of the top JROTC programs in the United States. With our country having just celebrated Veterans Day, we would be remiss not to thank these men for their years of service to our nation.
Thank you. I feel very honored to be recognized like this. And I just want to say that, you know, this is only possible because of the support we receive from the administration, and that emanates from our principal. We're very, very grateful.
Thank you to everyone that made this happen, made it possible. It's an honor for me to receive this. It's a true testament to our leaders, our leader, the principal, who works day in, day out to make this happen. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we had the honor of surprising Mary Laura, Office Manager for the District Special Education Department. Dr. Sue Singh, Chief Executive Officer of Special Education, shared the following about Mary. Mary's exceptional commitment to customer service and her unwavering support for both our school sites and the district office are truly invaluable. She embraces her responsibilities with a strong sense of personal pride, consistently approaching each task with enthusiasm and a positive demeanor. By promoting a collaborative environment, she actively engages with all departments to deliver exceptional service. Mary's impactful contributions and service-oriented approach truly make her deserving of this recognition.
So I want to say thank you so much for awarding me with this award. Being part of the Special Education Department has been such a wonderful experience for me over the past years, and I've gotten to work with such an incredible team of people and mentors. And I'm honestly really honored to receive this. I'm really happy and grateful to be part of this department, and I look forward to providing the excellent service that we have for the continuing years.
Congratulations again to Colonel Mark Toll, Staff Sergeant Carlos Mata Barajas, and Office Manager Mary Laura. Thank you for your unwavering dedication and commitment to our students in the Orange Unified School District.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Item 6G, Board Recognition of Students, Staff, and Community. And I think we generally start with our student board members. And why don't we mix it up a little bit? And we'll start with Canyon tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Christensen, President Erickson, District Trustees, and Community Members. These past few months have been filled with exciting events for Canyon. October included our Ambassador Program's Freshman Orientation Day, where freshmen were put into groups led by two senior or junior ambassadors. They played icebreaker games or put into groups, or they played icebreaker games, got advice for making the most of high school, and became excited to get involved on campus. The Ambassador Program additionally hosted an on-campus trick-or-treat with Imperial Elementary students on the day of Halloween. On November 4th, we started a canned food drive, which was incentivized as a competition for class points on who could collect the most cans. During November, we also created a thankfulness tree in which every student wrote a note of gratitude on a paper leaf cut out, and we assembled and displayed our tree in the quad through the end of the month. As December rolled around, our ASB hosted a toy drive, successfully collecting 100 gift boxes for kids through Operation Christmas Child. Last week, we had a lunchtime cornhole competition for both teachers and students. It was a very fun activity that attracted many spectators and participants. We also had a spirit week with dress-up days in themes such as Ugly Sweater Tuesday, Winter Wonderland Wednesday, where everyone wore white, and Fuzzy Feet Friday for Fun Festive Socks. This week, we'll be giving out Hot Cocoa for finals. With respect to the arts, our drama program put on an amazing production of You're a Good Man Charlie Brown and another fantastic play titled Clue. Our choir program held an event in the NPR called Canyon Cafe, serving good food and good music. This past Saturday, they also held their winter concert, which was additionally for the school and community to watch. Lastly, I want to highlight a couple sports teams. To finish off the fall sports season, the girls' flag football team made history by becoming CIFD1 semifinalists, only barely losing to Orange Lutheran, the team that ended up winning the entire thing. We have also started off our winter sports season strong. Boys' basketball won the North Orange County Championship Tournament. We will be having our first official home basketball game this coming Friday against Costa Mesa with the theme Standing on Business, and we are really excited to have a packed student section. Thank you.
Good evening, President, Madam President Erickson, Board Trustees, Cabinet, and Community. El Madina currently is having such a blast right now with, with winter break coming up, and we have multiple events that have happened in the month of November and December. November, we hosted our Renowned International Week, where we celebrated cultural diversity and inclusion here on, at El Madina, sorry. We hosted a variety of events, such as our international clubs hosting a weekly event with Metta bringing in Aztec dancers, our Black Student Union Club bringing in, having a day of jump roping, our VSA having a lion dance during the quad. And then we celebrated the week with having an international assembly and lunch during the last Friday of the week. In December, we currently are celebrating finals with Wish Ferry, which is a renowned El Madina tradition. During Wish Ferry, we celebrate throughout the week with lunch activities such as cookie decorating, ornament decorating. We had like the Caching Jelly Donuts on the string on Friday, I believe, which was a really fun event. And then we had a snowball fight with teachers and students on Thursdays, a way to promote culture on campus. And then we also like to give out gifts, a big part of Wish Ferry, where we give out gifts to students who turn in wishes to give out either to students, teachers, staff, community. And this is just another way to promote great support throughout campus, especially during finals week where everybody's, head tech, everybody's stressed. And it's just a great way to bring El Madina and the community closer together. Our theater and vocal music departments this past weekend closed their production of Beauty and the Beast. And I just wanted to say I am immensely proud of all the students and staff who came together to come during this production, and their amazing work was truly greatly appreciated. And I want to thank to all the community members who came by during these past four days to support our students and all their hard work. They truly deeply appreciate it. And then something that our Rotary Program, our interact club here at El Madina is doing currently, is that we are collecting soda tabs for, as a fundraiser, to collect money for the Ronald McDonald House. So each classroom has a little tub where students can bring in soda tabs from like any sort of like aluminum can, containers, and that, those soda tabs are used, in turn are recycled, and then they're used to collect money and funds for the Ronald McDonald House. And we are doing this throughout the year. We just implemented these containers, I believe, three weeks ago. And then we will be collecting soda tabs throughout the years. And at the end of May, we will be collecting all of these tabs and donating them to our McDonald House. It's just a way for us to bring further contribution towards Orange and our fellow community. And yeah, so that's all of our updates for El Madina. We are very excited to close out this week, and we cannot wait for what next semester has, what next semester brings. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent. I would like to provide an update on activities taking place at Richland High School. All aim at fostering a strong sense of community and supporting student success. On Thursday, December 19, 25 students will be graduating from Richland High School. RHS is hosting a senior activity this week for those graduating, and there will be a ceremony on campus. In an effort to recognize and celebrate the dedication of our staff, ASB has launched a Teacher of the Month program. Each month, one teacher and one staff member are nominated for this honor. ASB prepares thoughtful gifts to express appreciation for their hard work and commitment for our school community. Our counseling team continues to play an important role in supporting students' development. They have been organizing colleges and career field trips to Fulton College, Santa College, and Job Courts. RHS is focused on providing students with exposure, potential career pathways. On December 12, Richland hosted a college and career fair. Military trade programs and colleges were on campus to provide students with important information to help them reach their future goals. These activities reflect our commitment to recreating, to creating, sorry, and supportive and engaging environment for both students and staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Trustees, Superintendent Christensen, and Cabinet Members. I will be giving an update on Orange High School this evening. In the month of November, our ASB team hosted our annual canned food drive, where students, staff, and community partners, most notably Hulte Ferre, donated close to 3,000 pounds of non-perishable items that were donated to our Friendly Center. The Friendly Center directly serves our local community, and we are proud to be in partnership with them. Our Spirits Squad, both cheer and dance teams, have been working very hard this season, and I am proud to say that both of our Lady Panther teams have made it to nationals. Another way that our Panthers give back to our students on campus during this time of the year is our annual Panther Wishes Program. To spread the joy, students have the opportunity to nominate themselves or another student, and we do what we can to help them make their holidays just a little bit brighter. This year, we are serving over 45 students, and we are helping them with everything from utility bills to grocery gift cards, to helping buy gifts for their younger siblings. Amidst the college application season, we celebrated our seniors with this amazing milestone by having a barbecue that was hosted by several of our campus staff. League finals for cross-country went amazing this season. Our girls' varsity team made history this year as they, as they were the first team to become league champions ever in our school's history. And our boys' team also ended off their season as they placed second place. Our indoor sports have been very excited to use our newly remodeled dome, aka our historic gymnasium. So we hope to see you all there at a game very soon. And as you can see on the dais, we have treats for all of you, just as gratitude for my spotlight tonight. And thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Nadia, for the gifts that you gave to your colleagues, as well as the Board of Education. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate President Erickson on being nominated as Board President. Of course, Superintendent Christensen as the new Superintendent for the Orange Unified School District, as well as the new Board of Education, the Cabinet here in Orange Unified, and the entire Orange Unified School District community. First and foremost, I believe I should express my farewells to the Assistant Principal of Curriculum, Mr. Rich Simons, as he departs from Villa Park High School to Bend, Oregon. He will serve as Director of Communications for a small rural Oregon school district, definitely, you know, quite the contrast with the urban, suburban feel of Villa Park High School. Mr. Simons definitely has a place in my heart. I joined ASB my freshman year, but he came to ASB sophomore year during a very tumultuous time when Activities Director departed from us. So we had, we had an interim around several months in where Mr. Simons served as an Activities Director, and during that time, had the opportunity to get close with Mr. Rich Simons. At Villa Park High School, we have a tradition of reintroducing every four years a program called Every 15 Minutes, which is tasked to educate our students on the dangers of drunk driving. We just had our meeting last weekend, oh, sorry, last week, not last weekend, where teachers, students, and elected officials had the opportunity to be a part of this meeting. I myself was just nominated to be out of the two students to serve as, as a member of the planning committee. I'd also like to... I'd also like to thank Councilmember Crystal Miles for helping us secure funding from several governmental sources as well. This past Tuesday last week, our wonderful Villa Park musical program performed a beautiful concert at the First United Methodist Church of Orange. A night filled with beloved holiday classics, and also a variety of chorus selections helped immerse the audience in the holiday spirit. Beyond that, as you guys know, Villa Park, uh, since the mid-'80s had the tradition of hosting the Dry Land Boat Parade. It was an opportunity for community members, also student organizations at Villa Park High School as well, to be involved. So various, uh, sports teams, such as our, our aquatics program and our basketball team had the opportunity to have floats of their own. It's pretty cool. Our aquatics program had a really cool float with a, with a spartan top. We also had our marching band there as well, who did an excellent job. Beyond that, in celebration of Christmas spirit, we have a canned food drive competition, which ends this week. The class with the most canned foods, canned food items that are fundraised will receive a donut party upon return from spring break. Mr. Nicholas Aguirre, who teaches Spanish, has give or take over 130 canned food drives, so it was, it was amazing. I came by, I was, oh my gosh, Mr. Aguirre, very impressive indeed. And I believe I'd be remiss if I didn't speak on the CSBA conference that I, as well as my colleagues and the rest of the Board of Education, had the opportunity to attend. It was my first conference with the CSBA and as a student board member in general. I believe that it was a great opportunity, it really was, to immerse myself in the educational world. We learned about the LCAP, the dashboard, how budgets are work, and of course, the budgets which we presented later today, which is very intricate indeed. And I also had the opportunity to, uh, to bond with my colleagues as well from the other school sites. It was an opportunity that I hope that I pass on, hopefully this bad, the board passes on to future student board members in the future. And I do have to thank Ms. Eric for chaperoning us, as well as Mr. Gonzalez for giving us this opportunity. But one component that really stuck with me, that the CSB conference really spoke on, was the topic of legacy. And it was a reminder to me that the seats that we are currently sitting on as student board members aren't owned, but rather borrowed. I am a continuation, we as student board members, even as board trustees perhaps, are a continuation of the legacy of the boards before us. And using what I learned from the CSB conference, using from I learned through networking with my colleagues, of course, here, here in the Orange Unified School District, and across school districts across state California, I use those components, I use what I will, I have learned to protect student, student rights across the Orange Unified School District. But lastly, I'd like to congratulate Trustee Vane, Thomas, Paige, Glass, and Pelly on either their elections or appointments. I am interested in what the, the future holds for the Orange Unified School District, but more importantly, I am looking forward to working together to elevate student voices. Thank you so much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and thank you to all the student board members for participating, as you did, in CSBA's student board activities. I hope that you enjoyed it, um, and thank you to Mrs. Eric for chaperoning and helping out with that. Um, all right, our board members, do we have, uh, board comments? Board recognition of students, staff, and community? I'll just take volunteers at this point. I won't point each of you out, and... Who would like to go first? Trustee Yamazaki.
You were looking right...
I knew, I knew I'd call on you first, but...
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here on this very exciting evening. I would like to congratulate, once again, our newly seated trustees and, of course, President Erickson. I'm looking forward to working with each one of you and developing a strong governance team. It seems so long ago that we gave a report because we missed last month, but there are a few things I'd definitely like to mention. We had, uh, well, OUSD was well represented at the Orange State of the City event that was hosted by Chapman University. Many of the trustees and administration went there to support, and we got an update on the city's priorities, but most, mostly, I was very excited to learn that our very own parent and active volunteer, Aaron Jacoby, was named Citizen of the Year. He was one of four parents who launched the care organization to support Measure K and Measure S. He volunteers tirelessly at Orange High School and, oh, including establishing boosters, supporting sports and music programs. He also volunteers in the greater community, and there is no way I could do just, do him justice in one paragraph, but just know that he's an amazing person, um, so I want to give him a shout out, and we are really lucky to have him in our school community. Also, I attended so many events, and I wish I can go into detail, but I want to thank everybody, um, all the teachers and principals for letting us visit. I went to the Jogathon at Palmyra, Noel Canyon Jogathon, ribbon cutting ceremony at Orange High School, four trunk or treats. One of the events that I want to talk about is President Erickson and I attended an event at Orange Coast College District Office, and we celebrated the passage of the bipartisan bill, AB 1805. It was signed into law. It was authored by Assemblymember Ta, ensuring that the landmark civil rights case Mendez versus Westminster is taught in schools. And luckily, in Orange Unified, we were doing that, but now, um, the state of California will be learning about that. And what's so important about that is that, um, it set the precedent, precedent, sorry, for Brown versus Board of Education. So it was a great honor to also meet Sylvia Mendez, a civil rights advocate and a nurse who was a student in the center of the case. Trustee Paige and I visited Fletcher twice in the last couple of months. You probably were there a lot more, but we were there for Fall Festival and seeing the students enjoy fall-related activities, but a second time we were there, we were greeted by members of the Chinese consulate who graciously donated books in Mandarin for our students to use. They also toured our classrooms, and they were just so overjoyed, overjoyed seeing our students learn Mandarin. We also attended Jordan's Dia de los Muertos. We had Orange County Teacher of the Year events, we have site visits, and the other one is at Cronotol, and Sergeant Matas invited us to the Marine Corps Orange High School, J R O T C Marine Corps Birthday for Veterans Day. Sorry if I'm stealing everybody's... I just wanted to also thank President Erickson for recapping the CSBA event, who I'd like to also add my congratulations to our Special Education Department and Dr. Singh on receiving the well-deserved Golden Bell. Since I've been on the board, we have received a Golden Bell almost every year, which is a remarkable achievement. I was talking to other school board members, and that's almost unheard of, so I'd like to congratulate our district on that. I also want to just reiterate how important as school board members that we attend CSBA, and it's a way for us to continuously learn and keep up to date on the new laws and issues facing school districts. I took workshops that covered topics such as AI in education on both the administration and teacher side, and its implications. The Brown Act, Title IX, declining enrollment, board member vacancies, and how to best include student, student board members. So they were all invaluable, and I took away so many things. As mentioned, Superintendent, uh, well, as Superintendent Christensen mentioned, many of us, including Trustee Vane and I, attended the Warm Hand, Warm Hearts Program, and I think it's worth repeating, because when you walk into the room and you see 600 bags, that's a community coming together. I want to thank all of our parents, our, our staff, our teachers, parent groups, our community groups for all supporting and contributing to this. It was just absolutely amazing. I was at a school last year, and they were handing out the bags, and it was so touching to see the kids receive it, because a lot of times, this is probably one of the only things that they get. And, you know, in the bags are like clothes, jackets, shoes, socks, some of the basic necessities, but also they had fun things too, like some toys and sports items, so it, it really does warm your heart. Lastly, I want to thank Orange High School for the goodies here. I know she just left, and I want to wish everyone a great holiday season and all the best for a happy, healthy, and peace in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Do we have anybody else who would like to, um, give board recognition? Okay, Trustee Pelly?
Thank you, President Erickson. I wanted to, again, thank Superintendent Christensen for coming out of retirement. Retirement is busy, we've learned, but, don't be fooled, people. No, I, I, I remember when I returned to Orange, my first day back as a principal, I had just gotten word right before lunch that the ovens were not working or something, and we were going to have to figure out what to do for lunch, and I was kind of scrambling and had to make a quick announcement, and just as I finished and was kind of flustered, I hear, "Welcome to Orange Unified," and there's, there's Superintendent Christensen at my school, out of 27 elementary schools, he was there to support me because I was new back to the district, and I just, I'll never forget that, and he sat me down and just said, "This is why we love principals and elementary school principals, you know, because you're in the middle of it, and you just got to figure these things out." But I never forgot that, so I just want to thank you, and I'm so glad that, that you're back and, and helping us out, so thank you. Also wanted to, to congratulate President Erickson, and I just, I, I really kind of want to, want to echo both, what both of you had said previously, especially the fact that tonight, you know, this is a big night, and this new board really does have important work to do, and we, we expect it of, of all of you, and I know that's what you had said, President Erickson. And we want to work hard, and I think this board is willing to do the work, but I'm excited to be back. It was only seven months ago that I was sworn in for the first time, and it seems in some ways like a lot longer than that, because a lot's happened. And it was humbling then to be appointed by my fellow trustees, but being elected is just overwhelming, and, you know, you heard the numbers of voters, I can't even imagine that many people know my name, you know, it's amazing, but with, with that, that support from the community, there's a responsibility, and I just want everyone to know that not only do I appreciate it, but I, I take that very seriously. I know that that is a huge responsibility, and, and I, I am so excited that our, our community just got so engaged with, with everything that's happened, but I urge you to please stay engaged, stay with us, keep us accountable. I think we all want to be held accountable because that's what we're here for. I hope that, you know, in a couple years, you're still standing up and clapping when we come in the room. That's kind of the goal, that, you know, that, that things are still going well, but if you stay engaged with us and we can remain community partners, I think that's, that's the key to success, and I feel like we have this team up here who is absolutely committed. The knowledge and the, just the expertise we have up here, not that we know everything, but I think between all of us, we are going to have some really great conversations, and the one thing I, I can tell you for sure about these people, we will put OUSD kids first, and every decision we make is going to be about our students and putting them first and doing what's best, and I think this is just a really exciting time for this district, and I just want to thank everybody who supported me and the people up here, and I think this is going to be a great team, so, um, thank you.
Trustee Paige?
Thank you. A lot has been shared already, so I'll just keep it short. I just wanted to also thank everyone for electing us, or electing me for another year and entrusting us with the education of all of our students. We definitely couldn't have done this with the hundreds of volunteers that showed up every single day to support our campaigns. Think of a canvassing day where we didn't have a parent or a teacher, or potentially students as well, joining us, so just thank you for your continued support and tireless dedication to our students every single day. I also want to ask Dr. Whitmer if he can introduce himself a little bit. I don't think we had the opportunity at the last meeting to be able to welcome you properly, so if you can just take a minute or two to be able to share who you are to our community, that would be greatly appreciated.
I, I appreciate that, thank you. I'm very happy to be here in Orange and grateful to be here. Thank you for, for approving me for this position as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. I previously was in Walnut Valley Unified School District for about 11 years, and served as assistant soup and deputy soup there in both ed services and human resources, and just a great honor to be here in Orange and to be a part of this team, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Paige, and thank you, Assistant Superintendent Whitmer. Who's next? Trustee Vane.
Well, hello, everyone. First, I would like to thank my colleagues on the board for the very warm welcome, and also all of you in the room. It was very heartwarming to come in and have a, a new thing in my life and a new thing in the community. I look forward to serving the community, and I promise to be an engaged trustee and attend those events and go to school sites. As you saw, I am also an OUSD parent, and so I'm very invested personally in our school. I also promise to listen and to keep each and every one of our students at the forefront of my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Vane. Trustee Glass?
I can't promise to be brief, but I'll do my best. Just to be, just to be clear. I want to just start off by saying good morning, and the reason why I say good morning is because it's a new day, and the reason why I say it's a new day is because we're here, and we're very appreciative of everyone that's supported us and to those who didn't, because we serve for everyone, okay? It's very important, and the group of people that are representing this community are very important to everyone in the community. We need to bring back, and I hadn't heard this recently, but this District of Excellence mantra needs to be held high. And I want to start off by saying that, and then moving into a walk. I take a walk every day, and after Fourth of, excuse me, after Halloween, I went by Fairhaven, and I saw an ofrenda. And it just reminded me of how important it is to showcase things like that, because it's important to the community. And I can't speak to every single school that had one, but Elena Rodriguez provided me a nice list of students with regards to a portfolio, if you will, of pictures all over our entire district where there were ofrendas, where we were honoring families, those that are here, that are loved ones that have left us. It's very important for us to remember these people, and it doesn't mean every school has to have it, you may have a different way of celebrating the community and the families, but it was just something that touched me as I walked through. I have to talk about teachers, because at the schools that my students go to, Palmyra and at Yorba, there was a genuine love for students. And when I went to Palmyra just the other day in my sweats, I wear sweats, they were having a secret, the teachers were having a secret dress-up day, where they were, in that particular moment, they were being Secret Service, and all the students were like super excited to see their teachers lined up outside. They don't have to do that. This is something that you want to do, you plan it, you want to be involved in it. I'll talk about going to Yorba and seeing teachers watching the students play volleyball and play football. Very important, they don't have to be there after school, but these are the people we work with and for, and it's critical to have that in our minds as we serve these next, for Sarah and I, two years, and for the remainder, for four. Now, I want to begin closing by, by saying, again, good morning, because the words of Nikki Giovanni just resonate in my heart and my mind and my soul, and if you aren't familiar with her, you know, Google's your friend, so please go ahead and do that and check out Google. But I will say this, the people that showed up here this evening, including yourselves, are very special to each and every one of us, because they don't serve just one group, one trustee, they serve, they, they support the community. So I'm very appreciative of not only the fact that we had teachers and other supporters go out and support us as candidates, but people that were here, like yourselves, that are here to support us as we do our work, and that accountability needs to be something that resonates throughout this ent- And that accountability needs to be something that resonates throughout this entire term. So thank you all very much. Thank you to Superintendent Christensen for coming out of retirement. Thank you for newly appointed, installed President Erickson. And thank you to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Glass, and good morning to you. You're the last one standing. Trustee Thomas?
Thank you, President Erickson.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody in the room for being here. And when I looked through the window on my way in and saw about 32 people that I knew, it, I don't know what to say, I'm so honored and humbled beyond. I saw about three or four bus drivers right away that I worked with here 30 years ago. I said as a young man in my junior year at Orange High School that I would run for school board. And I said I would do it after I retired. Well, I'm not retired yet. But timing is everything. And I'm super excited to serve this board and this community with these six wonderful and talented trustees, to give back to the students first, their families, staff and community, and the district that's given me so much. I attended OUSD schools for 13 years and started my career here in school transportation, as I said, 30 years ago. I bring a wealth of expertise on the business side of the public school districts, and I'm eager to continue learning, which I did a lot at CSBA, I have to say. The first day orientation, we sat a long time, and I wasn't used to sitting that long. But it was, I learned so much. I believe my brain was in total overload after two full days. But the Golden Bell Awards was amazing. Congratulations again to our Special Ed Department. Thank you to everyone who encouraged me, supported me, and puts their trust in me in this new journey that I'm embarking on. I look forward to helping make OUSD be the premier district in Orange County that parents all over want to send their children to. And we are OUSD. And I also want to say lastly, once a Panther, always a Panther. But I did attend the, excuse me, OHS ribbon-cutting ceremony. It was fabulous. To be back on that campus, I went to school same year as Councilman John Dumetro on the Orange City Council, ran into him and about five other people I graduated with. So it was amazing. Thank you all.
Thank you. We have a lot to celebrate tonight, and I know it's taken a while, but this is an important night. So thank you, and again, welcome to our new members, and I'm very excited. Item 7A, approval of minutes. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes as presented and reviewed. Any comments?
I'll move.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Trustee Page. Did you make the motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Trustee Pelley, seconded the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 8A, public comment. Trustee Page, do we have any public comments?
We do, we have three non-agenda.
Okay. So we will keep those at the non-agenda portion unless we want to change it? Are we? Okay. Action item 9A, presentation of academic data, actions and next steps. Christina Lin, Berna Gadsi, and Monica Luther to present. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and guests. I'm Dr. Christina Lin, the Executive Director of Student Achievement. Tonight, we're here to present the data on our district's performance in the 2024 state testing, highlight the successes of many amazing OUSD schools, and recognize the dedication and hard work behind these achievements. Overall, OUSD has outperformed state results in both EOA and math. In EOA, around 58% of OUSD students met or exceeded standards compared to about 47% statewide. In math, around 45% of our students met or exceeded standards versus around 36% statewide. This result reflects OUSD's strong commitment to academic excellence and student success, consistently exceeding state expectations. During the 2023-24 academic year, OUSD demonstrated steady growth in state assessment results. In EOA, we saw a 0.64% increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards last year, bringing our total growth since 2022 to 2.84%. In math, OUSD achieved a 1.81% increase for the last school year with accumulated growth of 5.69% since 2022. When we look at county ranking over the past three years after COVID, OUSD has achieved the highest cumulative growth in both EOA and math among all unified school districts in Orange County. OUSD also demonstrated solid progress across our schools. In EOA, 19 schools increased the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards. Top performing schools are Crescent, Panorama Elementary School, and Kenyon High School. In math, 20 schools made gains. The three schools leading the way are Crescent, Anaheim Hill, and North Kenyon Elementary School. When looking at student growth, the three schools that have the most improvement in EOA are Taft, Yorba Middle School, and Cambridge Elementary Schools. In math, they are Jordan, Taft, La Vida Elementary School. Let's congratulate each of these schools for their outstanding achievements. Consistent growth in state testing is challenging, as most schools experience the so-called YOLO effect. Therefore, tonight, we would like to also celebrate the school that had defied this trend and achieved continuous progress, demonstrating the impact of their dedication and focused effort year after year. In EOA, the schools with the highest percentage increase over the past three years are Kenyon High School, California, and Cambridge Elementary School. For math, the top performing schools with the highest three-years growth are Taft, Jordan, and Sycamore Elementary School. All of these schools have a double-digit percentage gain, which represent a significant achievement and reflects substantial progress. We are so proud of these schools and want to recognize the efforts of everyone involved in making this possible. Congratulations. We would also like to share data on our English learner and student with disability subgroups and recognize the school that have excelled in supporting these students. In our English learner subgroup, the district achieved a 3.28% increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards in EOA and a 4.08% increase in math. In EOA, the schools with the highest percentage proficiency gains among English learners are Espina, California, and Taft Elementary School. In math, Running Springs Imperial and Espina Elementary School led with the most significant gains. We sincerely commend each of these schools for their exceptional accomplishment. In our students with disability subgroup, the district saw a 0.75% increase in students meeting or exceeding standards in EOA and a 2.04% increase in math. In EOA, Taft, Handy, and West Orange Elementary School achieved the largest proficiency gain. Again, for math, Taft, West Orange, and Crescent Elementary School demonstrated the highest level of progress. These achievements reflect the combined impact of district-wide initiative and targeted site-level efforts. Together, these strategies have contributed to a meaningful progress, and we are proud to recognize these schools for their role in supporting the growth of our students. To drive continuous improvement, OUSD follows a structured data analysis and monitoring protocol. Each year, I meet individually with the principal in August and September to share and discuss their state assessment results and establish specific goals for the school year. In October, principals shared their action plans and strategies based on the data with colleagues and the Ed Service team for feedback. Then the district conducts learning walks in partnership with the site administrators and teachers, providing targeted professional development and tailored support to strengthen site-level initiatives. Continuous progress monitoring is needed to address the needs of the individual student. Each site is responsible for managing and monitoring its own progress data, identifying areas for improvement, and adjusting its strategies to enhance student outcome. Following the winter break, I will hold a mid-year one-on-one data meeting with the principal along with their site team to have a collaborative discussion for refining their practices based on the current data. These meetings will support principals in maintaining a streamlined goal-setting document, ensuring the priority remains focused and aligned. In addition, the site's one-pager in your data binder also articulates this protocol, ensuring our approach remains data-informed, collaborative, and dedicated to student achievement. Now, to showcase these practicing actions, please allow me to welcome Dr. Gadsi, Principal of McPherson-Magnon School, and Dr. Luther, Principal of Yorba Middle School, to present how they apply data-driven strategies to advance student success at their sites as outlined in their one-pager.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Erickson, trustees, Superintendent Christensen, and Cabinet. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about McPherson with you this evening. Over the last two years, our students at McPherson have shown growth in both English Language Arts and in math, with our most recent results showing our students are proficient or above at 71% in Language Arts and 56% in math. We are especially proud of the growth of our fourth and fifth-grade students, the growth that they made last year in Language Arts, scoring 77% proficiency and 86% proficiency respectfully. We believe the key factor driving our growth is our intentional approach to instructional practices. So I have a few things to go over with you in terms of those intentional approaches. For our third through fifth-grade classes, we've implemented a departmentalized model where teachers specialize in specific subjects, so English Language Arts, math, and then social studies and science. This rotation model works because of the size of our school logistically, and so it allows for our teachers at those grade levels to have a stronger focus on their instructional practices within a designated curriculum and provides them more opportunity for differentiated instruction to meet the needs of their students. Additionally, in math, we've participated in a professional development series at McPherson on developing strategic thinking skills, and we've coupled this with an assessment tool called ClassTime. ClassTime allows teachers to get a real, real quick feedback on a specific math standard that they've taught, and then delineates the data to show if the student is having trouble with the math concept, the discrete skill, the technology tools that might be required of that problem, or the application level or the critical thinking level of the standard. All of this information can then be used to guide the teacher's next steps for instruction. For a similar purpose, we've also integrated the regular use of interim assessments throughout the school year. These standards-based assessments are small kind of practice aspect tests that also provide valuable feedback to the teachers on their students' mastery of the standards. The departmentalized model in third through fifth grade at McPherson really lends itself nicely to incorporating these into instruction. However, we've faced a few challenges with our middle school classes due to time constraints and the shorter blocks of time they have in their periods. To solve this problem, we've established a school-wide schedule for interims to ensure that they're used consistently and given to all of our students. So we actually give those six times a year, three for Language Arts and three in math. Not only does this give valuable feedback to our teachers, but giving the interims also ensure that our students feel comfortable with the format of the test and that we are prepared for all of the tech needs come May when we're giving the real tests. I also wanted to highlight two other things that I think are important in terms of our instructional practices at McPherson. One is that we have a very strong focus on the writing process, and this is for kindergarten through eighth grade, not just the testing grades. And also, I wanted to point out that we have a very organic culture of collaboration and reflection between our grade-level teams. I believe both of these practices are really a driving force behind our academic growth and can be attributed to the dedication and professionalism of our fantastic teachers. Some other factors beyond the classroom that I just wanted to point out that I think played a role in some of our success and growth over the past two years. First, we implemented a fun incentive system last year for students. We actually had a lot of fun with it in the office, too. We made our own scratch-off tickets with fun prizes for students. Free dress was a popular one for our middle school kids. We had some In-N-Out coupons and candy and raffle prizes. But students were given tickets for giving their best effort during testing. Obviously, instruction is the most impactful to student achievement, but we did find that making the environment fun and rewarding for kids made a difference in their focus and attention on the test as well. Secondly, I would really like to acknowledge our special education team for their time and effort in selecting thoughtful accommodations based on their students' needs. We did see improvement with our students with disabilities subgroup last year, and we believe that providing these appropriate accommodations allowed our students to better access the test and in order to show what they really know. In terms of our plans for this year, as Christina mentioned in our one-pagers, we've made some action plans as site leaders, and we're well on our way to working on ours as we're almost midway through the school year. But to summarize quickly, our big, our big topics that we're working on are further developing listening comprehension skills for students. We believe that this will also greatly benefit our English language learners, and we are placing a greater emphasis on informational text for reading and writing in our classrooms. Lastly, just an ultimate goal for us with the academic growth that we've seen, our goal at McPherson is to hopefully someday soon be eligible to apply for a California Distinguished School Award. I strongly believe we are a distinguished school already with amazing things happening at McPherson that make a rich educational experience for all of our kindergarten through eighth-grade students. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight. And now I would like to introduce Monica Luther, Principal at Yorba Middle School.
Didn't press the right button on that one.
Thanks, Will. Good evening, President Erickson, esteemed trustees, Superintendent Christensen, and distinguished district administrators and guests. It is an honor to stand before you today to present the progress and achievements of Yorba Middle School. I'm Dr. Monica Luther, the proud principal of Yorba Middle School, and I'm thrilled to share some data and our continued commitment to excellence. This past academic year, Yorba Middle School achieved significant academic growth. I'm proud to report a remarkable 9% increase in English Language Arts and a 6% increase in math, and that's 15% in math over the past two years for our students. These gains are more than just numbers. They represent the hard work, dedication, and collective commitment of every teacher, staff member, and stakeholder in our community. This growth is a testament to the deep desire of our team to establish Yorba Middle School as a distinguished educational institution. Every member of our staff has poured their passion and energy into nurturing our students, holding steadfast to our motto that Toros are scholars, leaders, and champions. This motto guides our daily interactions, decisions, and educational practices, creating an environment where achievement is celebrated and students are inspired to reach. creating an environment where achievement is celebrated and students are inspired to reach new heights. Caught it this time. As we look forward, Yorba Middle School is committed to sustaining the positive momentum through our comprehensive focus and growth plan. We have a school-wide avid focus, particularly emphasizing WICHER strategies. This approach strengthens students' writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading skills, equipping them with the tools they need for success at each and every threshold they encounter, both in academics and life beyond. With a heavy focus on supporting our large population of English language learners and special education students, collaboration through planned opportunities for academic discourse became our instructional focus for the year. By holding all students to the expectation of expressive language to share, generate, and refine their thinking and learning, we expanded our instructional toolbox as educators and enhanced collaboration between content areas by being able to use the same strategy across different content areas, but continue to increase the rigor. We are proud to say that those efforts paid off with equally significant growth for each of these important subgroups. Furthermore, we are committed to the mathematical framework of building thinking classrooms, fostering an environment of collective efficacy and shared responsibility. Through dedicated analysis of interim S back assessments and eye-ready test results, our team engages in data-driven discussions, particularly with our focused student data chats, which allow us to tailor our approach to meet the unique needs of every single student, but especially our EL and special education student populations. We recognize the importance of culture in supporting academic success. We are intentional about building a culture of achievement and belonging through rigorous academic and meaningful opportunities and celebrations, empowering our students to rise as leaders and build a deep connection to our campus for the mere 360 days that our Toros belong to us. Looking ahead, our North Star goals reflect our aspirations for continued excellence. Yorba Middle School is a national forum schools to watch and is currently WASCAC accredited for six years, affirming our commitment to high standards. In our commitment to WICHER strategies, we're exploring our path to become an avid national demonstration school, and we're working towards several goals that include RAMP designation as a recognized ASCA model program in school counseling, a PBIS award, and ultimately qualifying as that California Distinguished School. In conclusion, these achievements and aspirations are not possible without the unyielding dedication of our teachers, the staff, and community members. Every gain and every milestone is a reflection of their hard work and commitment to our students' futures. Together, we are building a brighter, more promising future for every Toro. Thank you for your support and partnership in helping us reach these goals. I'd now like to invite Dr. Lynn back on up.
Thank you.
Thank you, both principals. So, in closing, we believe our structured, data-driven approach set clear goals, foster growth, and prioritize student success. Through collaboration, we're making progress while recognizing more work lies ahead to enhance our performance. As we wrap that, we want to extend our best wishes to each one of you for a joyful holidays holiday season, and thank you so much for all your support. And let's continue to build on this momentum. Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn, Dr. Gussi, Dr. Luther. You're all dynamic, amazing. I'm going to reach out to my educators on the board to see who has questions, comments. Okay, Trustee Pelley.
Surprise, I'm gonna talk. First of all, thank you, Dr. Lynn. I know that you just have data probably still pasted all over your walls. I remember those days. What you do in supporting the principals is really incredible, and we know that the data is key. Once we can start looking at that and you're doing the data chats, that's a lot of work on top of what other things you do, but thank you. I also wanted to thank our amazing principals. Starting with the instructional strategies, we know is the most important thing we can do because what is done in the classroom, that is what the teachers do. That's what makes the difference. But in order for them to do it successfully, they need to have really strong, committed instructional leaders at their sites, and we know that you all do way more than just that, and that's such an important job. But in order to, to keep them supported and to hold them accountable, you have to be able to be a strong leader, looking at all the things you're doing, just changing the cultures at your school, having everybody have this idea of scholarship, and we are scholars, and we are working hard, and we're doing these strategies, and, and having it consistent across your school and everyone buy into that, that's hard. That's hard work, but that's, that's what principals do, and I want to thank you for that because that is not easy. And doing it in a, in a middle school, I can't even imagine, K-8, that's a lot of work, too, but thank you for that. And then seeing what you, how you partner with, with our district administrators, not just Dr. Lynn, talking about our special ed department and those assessment, the accommodations, that's crucial, as you mentioned, that, that giving them access to the test so they can show what they know, that is huge. You know, working with, with our department, you know, with EL students and, and knowing how we can, we can specify, drill down in that data, how we're going to be able to help them, and, and that's all instructional strategies, and that goes back to the teachers in the classroom. I just had a quick question about the interim assessments. Are those, Dr. Gussi, are those something teacher-made, or I'm just curious what those are, or what, or you probably know, too, Dr. Lynn? Whoever wants to answer.
The interim is from the S back. His back has an interim question.
Okay, so it's just right, right from the S back, okay.
And it's a good practice.
Yeah.
Practicing. And then not only, I think we always believe that the goal for doing any kind of assessment is, is focus on the instructional piece, because I always said that if you're gonna do it's assessment and do nothing with it, it's like getting on the scale and it do nothing with it, then don't do it because that's depressing. So, but, but our, our teacher are amazing. They utilize those tool, as an instructional tool, and on a daily basis. Some uses are like Walmart questions, you know, I, they, they try so hard.
Yeah, that's great. And the avid strategies, worker strategies, we know those work. I just wanted to add, and I'm sure you're doing this, but I hope other principals and site leaders have a chance to visit your schools and see what they're doing. I know that's one of those things, you just have to be able to get out and see what's happening. But thank you, guys, for what you're doing, and thank your teachers and, and our site administrators. It's a team effort, but I love seeing the, the growth, and you guys, we're gonna do it. We're gonna be blue-ribbon distinguished schools, whatever they're called now.
We will.
Thank you.
Dr. Glass?
Dr. Lynn, Dr. Luther, Dr. Gussi, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. I just want to have a question regarding articulation. And what are you all doing with your middle schools, and I know that's different for you with the elementaries, and working with your high schools so that we could maintain that type of positive data when it comes to their, their outcomes and their achievement, the students?
Yeah, definitely. That, that is really essential. When we provide the data, not only we provide this year's data. That's why the data points always like, when you look at the student profile, you'll see the historical data as well, and that conversation is, is needed. And also, we shared that with the curriculum department, so there are a lot of opportunity, and we're gonna do more. I mean, I'm so glad you bring that up, is understanding that where the, where it come from, and then that's exactly what Common Core was designed for. So that is something that we're gonna continue, we will, and we already do and to continue to work on. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Page?
Okay, thank you so much for being here a little later than usual and presenting. So it's, it's really important to like, share a lot of the highlights and just like, the areas of growth. But I think in order for us to also do our job well, we need to know like, where we've declined in order to be able to have those tough conversations of how we can best support all of you. And so that's something that we're interested in, and we've read the one-pagers and, and a lot of that, too, and, and some of us are aware, you know, can read them, but I think one of the questions that I have is really related to like, if a parent were to watch the presentation tonight and question like, why their school hasn't shown growth, like, what strategies are the schools that you've highlighted doing, and can they be replicated at the other sites?
And a lot of time when we do the presentation, it's just the one, I mean, two-year snapshot. So that's something that I mentioned here, there's a yo-yo effect. So it's not like, even though you don't see the name of the school, that doesn't mean that the school did not grow. So that is very particularly important that to, to emphasize that. And then to answer your question, I think that for each of the site, I mean, our data conversation is one-on-one, and it's like, three hours, four hours, and we really go down to like, individual class and then individual class group and then students. And I believe on the one pager, because they say it's one pager, we're allowed to give you more, and there's actually very, the principal, they all have very detailed plans about how to develop, depends on the school, that's the area they have to focus on. So I would suggest that, I mean, the parents can visit the site, because every school is very different, and every school has a data binder and in details that highlight the area of need, and even go down to the climate target level that the student by per-grade level they are working on right now, not just showing the data. Like I said, there's a plan to address that data.
So would a parent have to request that information, or are there like, conversation circles happening at sites to be able to discuss where the school is?
And I can invite the principal to kind of share with this, but I believe that's one of the, I mean, the PTSA meeting, I mean, you guys shared that, right?
Yeah, I, I can say from my site, at our PTSA meetings, we share, once the dashboard data has been released, that's something that I always share with my PTSA, and get feedback on as well.
Thank you. I have another follow-up question. So about three years ago, the board approved an additional instructional assistant at every elementary school site to really focus on intervention between TK and third grade. And I'm wondering if you've seen like, any growth, knowing that we intentionally focused in those areas before they test in third grade?
Yes, that's actually one of the, when we look at our data, it's very interesting when we look at it by grade level. One thing we did notice that our third grade, I mean, there's something that they called us like, people say there's a learning loss during COVID, but one thing we did notice that, because not only we look at our data, we only also look at the national, I mean, like norm, and our incoming third grade, our young kids, as becoming a lot stronger than the, the student that we had even before COVID. And we truly believe that that's a lot to do with, I mean, the district actually, I mean, foresee the need of these kids coming in, and they would need that individual support. And then, so I, I think that is something we appreciate, that the support from the board and allow us to have the staff to address the, the small group instruction in the classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah. Come on.
Sorry, I just wanted to add because I do have the general education aides on my site for, and they're supporting from my site kindergarten through second grade, and they are running intervention groups all day in the classroom under the direction of their teachers. And then this year with our added literacy resource teacher, really driving that early literacy reading intervention, that has, I, I think that we'll continue to see some really strong success from that.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, thank you very much. There is some incredible growth here, and I think that, as Trustee Page said, it's a matter of how do, how do we replicate it? You know, and how do we, obviously, those sites, you have incredible educational leaders at these sites, and, and on some campuses, we need more support for our educational leaders and the ability for them to really be able to study and learn from those educational leaders that are more successful. And I think that it's important to note, as you said, I mean, we started the process of IAs in instructional assistance three years ago, and is that showing? We need to really track that to see, because these are long-term, long-term issues, and they take long-term solutions. So thank you so much for this, and we, we wish you happy holidays as well.
Thank you so much.
This is actually an action item, so it is recommended that the Board of Education accept the Educational Services Presentation of 2024 Student Achievement Data. Do I have a motion? Okay, Dr. Glass, thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Pelley, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9B, first interim budget report. Salima Holquin and Magna Bolzara to present.
Just testing, testing here, making sure that I'm using the right button to click. Well, thank you, Super, thank you, and good evening, Madam President Erickson and trustees, as well as community members here and at home. Congratulations to all our three reappointed trustees, our new trustees, and all of our trustees in their new appointed roles. We look forward to continuing to work with all of you. And I pushed the wrong button. There we go. Okay. So tonight, I'm joined with Ms. Bolzara to present to you the first interim financial information. And before we get started with the financial information, we wanted to provide an overview and review for some of you of budget basics and the connection, the local control funding formula, also known as LCFF, and the Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP, have when it comes to the budget and the financial reporting information. We just had the opportunity to listen about student achievement, information from Educational Services and Division, and it is with the revenue and the expenditures that are part of the approved budget that we are able to improve student achievement. So, as you can see here from the first bullet, the budget is a fluid financial plan for meeting the district goals and objectives, actions for the year. The important thing to remember is that it is, it is a fluid as the assumptions and the goals may change, which we will discuss a little more in the presentation. Because it is fluid, the revenues and expenditures, which are part of the budget, are estimates based on the best-known information at the time of reporting. It also includes fund balance information to help make informed decisions for current and subsequent years, which again, we will discuss more in future slides. Budgets change and need to be revised as part of the annual state budget process, as well as the local process. This is a way of being fiscally responsible and providing information to the board and the community of financial changes that happened during the year and are projected to occur. While this slide provides you a chronological date order of the budget and the reporting cycle, some of the information is codependent on the release of the budget cycle, which keeps our financial staff on their toes. Once again, this is why budgets are very fluid and based on the best-known information at the time of reporting. For example, you approved an operating budget in June when the governor himself had not finalized the 2425 state budget, and our books for the 2324 fiscal year were yet not closed. The board was also finalizing other commitments. Tonight is an opportunity to provide you updated financial information based on those factors and actions. The budget and the financial reporting cycle is an ongoing and an overlapping cycle of past and future reporting. As we talk about the basics of a budget, let's talk about how school districts are funded in California. While the state has a more complex funding formula based on Prop 98, I'll focus on the basic funding sources and how we are funded. As this slide shows, our revenue sources come from the state, federal, and local dollars. More importantly, those dollars are based on the average daily attendance, known as ADA, not enrollment. Simply saying, we only get revenue when students come to school. Of course, enrollment is very important because it drives our ADA. So as our enrollment increases, and our ADA would increase if our enrollment decreases, our ADA also decreases. As you can see from the visual, we receive a per- As you can see from the visual, we receive a per-student base amount, which differs based on the grade span, which Ms. Bolzara will go more into detail when she talks about the assumptions used. In addition to base funding, there is additional districts, funding that our district receives for students with higher needs as part of the local control funding formula. An additional 20% is received through the supplemental grant per students identified with higher needs or also known as unduplicated pupil percentage count, our UPP count. If more than 55% of students in the district are of higher needs, then the district receives an extra 65% of the base beyond the 55% threshold. Our current UPA count for Orange Unified is slightly over 61%, which means that the concentration funding is based on six point, a little over 6%. So it's not that we receive 65% completely over, it's after that 55% threshold. Higher need students are identified as specifically foster youth, English learners and low-income students. Our federal funding is minimal and also has specific use. The LCFF, which makes up about 80% of our state revenue, was intended to provide more flexibility and with the accountability connected to the LCAP, has become more restrictive over the years. When it comes to expenditures for reporting purposes, the expenditures are general categories which you see here. The biggest is salaries and benefits as we need staff to meet the needs of students. If you recall, when I mentioned, that I mentioned when students are absent, we don't get funding for them. However, that salary responsibility which we've committed and approved as part of the operating budget is still needed. It is also important to note that all expenditures must be allowable based on the funding source allocated for the expenditure. Now, let's briefly discuss the budget connection to the LCAP and the LCFF. In 2013, Governor Brown wanted to provide more local control, so he came up with the local control funding formula. Prior to that, there was more categorical funding. The LCFF, which accounts for about 80% of the state funding, also brought about the local control accountability plan as previously shared the LCAP. The LCAP and the budget approval processes are both interdependent and interrelated. Budget approval is not possible without prior county office of education approval of the LCAP. Districts must develop an LCAP that will align with the district expenditure plan. The LCAP, which is funded through the LCFF, is an accountability plan connected to the expenditures in the budget. They both are fluid plans that support the academic needs of our students. Oops, sorry. Went a little too fast there. Okay. So we wanted to provide this additional information before I turn it over to Ms. Bolzara to provide a better understanding to the change in the information that Ms. Bolzara will present and also some information to all the considerations we take into account when presenting you with the budget to adopt. I will now turn it over to Ms. Bolzara.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan.
Good evening Superintendent Christensen, Madam President, Board Trustees, Executive Cabinet, District Administrators and Community Members. In accordance with ED Code and AB 1200, school districts are required to submit two interim financial reports to the board. The purpose of the report is to identify whether the district meets its current and the two subsequent years' financial obligations. There are three types of certifications. Positive certification mean that the district can meet its financial obligations. Qualified certifications mean that the district may not meet its financial obligation for the current and the next two fiscal years. Negative certification means that the district will not meet its obligation for the current and the next two years. And district staff recommends the positive certification for the first interim report for Orange Unified. Proposed budget, budgets for the 2425 year were adopted in June before the state enacted budget in July. The assumptions that were utilized for proposed budget were not finalized that time. Here you'll see assumptions at the adoption and first interim and for the next two years. The cost of living adjustments were updated to include 1.07 percentage for 2425 year for revenues and certain restricted programs. Our funding is based on average daily attendance and a slight revision in 2324 P2 attendance reflected in higher funded ADA for this and the following two years. The change in consumer price index, which is inflation factors, are updated for expenditures projections for the all three years. Pension rate for CalSTRS rate has been stabilized to stay same for a few years and CalPER's rate has declined slightly for the current and the next two years since the adoption. LCFF-based funding shows an increase per ADA due to the change in the COLA cost of living adjustments. TK students are approximately funded about 3,000 more than the K through three students and the rates include cost of living adjustments for the following years. General Fund is a primary operating fund that accounts for all activities and revenues for the district. Within the General Fund, all the activities and revenues are either unrestricted or restricted. Unrestricted revenues may be used as needed by the district and come from various federal, state and local revenue sources and inter-fund transfers. Estimates from adoption in June to first interim as of October 31st have been revised to have higher unrestricted revenue over 8.7 million. The main reasons for changing, changes are state budget adoption in July increased cost of living adjustments from 0.76% to 1.07%. Amendment for P2 adjustment increased lottery revenue from $177 per ADA to $191 per ADA and transportation revenue. Local revenue increased due to the revised interest income based on the higher interest rate and revised lease and rentals revenue. Decrease in contributions due to the reduction in sustainability plan transfer to restricted program. Restricted revenues, on the other hand, may only be used for specific purposes and they come with various restrictions. We see various restricted funding such as special education, career technical education programs, expanded learning opportunity program, educated effectiveness and learning recovery block grant, to name a few. You'll notice federal revenue has revised to increase by 8.1 million at first interim due to carryover of deferred revenue programs such as Title and ASR program. Deferred revenue programs are the ones that are allowed to spend in multiple years, but if not spent in one year, they will also get added to the following year and in revenues and expenditures. State revenue revised to include increased special education apportionment and increased restricted lottery revenue from $72 per ADA to $82 ADA. And updated expanded learning opportunities program and community schools allocations. Contributions to sustainability plan transfer reduced from unrestricted revenue. Overall restricted revenue increased by 7.4 million. So unrestricted and restricted combined revenue increased over 16 million in total from adopted in June. Next. Similarly, the unrestricted and restricted combined expenditures increased by 37.2 million in total from the adopted budget in June. The expenditures are allocated and projected in various categories. Salaries and benefits increased to include board-approved salary increase of 9.75% for certificated and leadership and retroactive salaries increase of 6.183% effective July 1st, 2023 and 1.836% effective July 1st, 2024 for classified members. The salary increase were approved after the board adopted the budget in June, so that's why they are included in the first interim projections. Materials and supplies revised to include textbooks, supplies and equipment carryovers, supplemental funds, special education testing materials and other materials for unrestricted and restricted funds. Operating expenses and services increased for legal settlements, consulting for emergency operations center, eye-ready contracts, software licenses, contractor services for ASR-funded facilities, projects, carryover, wireless access points in multi-purpose rooms and high school gyms. Capital outlay increased budget for purchasing for buses, replacing for golf carts, security cameras for site, IT equipments and various ASR-funded projects. As I mentioned, as mentioned earlier, the first interim report requires to provide financial obligations for current and the next two fiscal years. Multi-year projections include adopted budget, first interim projections for 2425 and the next two years. And I would like to draw your attention to the first yellow highlighted line, which is change in fund balance. 2425 first interim projection shows negative change in fund balance, which is referred to as deficit spending, where expenditures are more than the revenue received for that year. Main reason for deficit spending, main reason for deficit spending in 2425 year is due to the negotiated increase in salaries and benefits that are budgeted and one-time COVID programs such as SR3 and SR3 summer program, arts and music block grant and learning recovery block grants. 2526 and 2627 projected to have positive change in fund balance since it does not include retroactive 2324 salary increase for classified members as it will be paid in 2425 year and does not include COVID, COVID programs since they are ended this year as well. The second last line on the table shows the beginning fund balance and you can see that the first column adopted budget, the beginning balance 219 million changed to 216. That, that budget is before closing the books of 2324. So once we close the books in September, the beginning fund balance was changed to 216 million and now it's estimated to be 197 at the end of this year and 204 and 210 million respectively for the following two years. The projected ending balances, the last line, are unrestricted and restricted combined ending fund balances. And in the next slide, we'll be going over the designation of these funds.
And before Ms. Bolzara goes on to share more information about these multi-year projections and the ending fund balance, I wanted to add the importance of multi-year projections and a fund balance. Multi-year projections allow you to adjust and stabilize based on the known projections. Yes, we are currently projected to deficit spend for this year. However, it does not mean that we will not meet our financial obligations for this current year and our two consecutive years and therefore do recommend a positive certification. As you heard, the adopted budget at the time of adoption did not have deficit spending and that was based on the assumptions and commitments that were yet not finalized. So as previously discussed, that is a reason why a budget is fluid as the information changes and some of those adjustments need to be made. Now that those assumptions and commitments have been finalized, we are updating the financials to reflect those updates as Ms. Bolzara has been sharing with you. Deficit spending while not encouraged is at times utilized to stabilize and fund priorities the board has approved through committed funds. It means that for that fiscal year, we are receiving less revenue than what our expenditures are expected to be for that year. That is why a healthy reserve or a healthy fund balance beyond the minimum requirement of 3% is important. Additionally, commitments may need to change as new information, financial information is made available. Finally, it is informative information to make the adjustments which we are making needed to meet our financial, our financial and fiscal responsibilities. Ms. Bolzara will continue with more specific details regarding our current multi-year projections, but again, as you can see here, we are projected to have positive funds at the end of the following, the subsequent years as you see here on this chart. And I will let Ms. Bolzara continue.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan.
The beginning and ending fund balances are unrestricted and restricted combined fund balances. Out of the total combined fund balances, there are funds reserved for petty cash and store inventory. The portion for restricted is for restricted programs to be utilized per program guidelines and the 3% to reserve for economic uncertainty based on the total budgeted expenditures. Assigned funds are designated for LCFF supplemental and concentration funds, carryover, vacancies and attract and retain funds. The funds are committed based on the 10% reserve cap trigger and adjusted based on the budget updates. And I will go over them in detail in the next slide. Thank you. Here is the detailed information about combined fund balances for, for adopted current year at first interim and the two subsequent years. The change from adopted to first interim for assignments are due to budgeting the side carryover funds, budgeting for newly hired staffing, reducing vacancy assignments and the commitments were adjusted for negotiations commitments due to the budgeted salaries and corresponding benefit increases. Fiscal emergencies were changed due to budgeted legal settlements, consultants for emergency operations center, higher change in the 2425 beginning fund balance estimates from adoption to first interim. Required 3% reserve for contingencies were also increased as they were based on the total budgeted expenditures. Unassigned funds are within 10% reserve cap, but assignments not identified at this time in the last line. Restricted programs that are entitlements have longer periods to spend the funds and are allowed to have fund balances. We are estimating to have 47.4 million in ending fund balances for these entitlements such as expanded learning opportunity program and arts and music block grant. Both are available until 2526 year and learning recovery block grant available until 2728. Other deferred revenue programs are allowed to carryover but not allowed to have fund balance. The carryover estimated about 5.5 million for title programs that have about 27 months to spend and universal pre-K grants are available until June 30th, 2026. In addition to the General Fund, school districts manage several other funds. As part of the first interim, we are required to submit information regarding other funds. Other funds like capital projects, debt service and ASB play vital roles in ensuring long-term investments, debt repayment and student activities are properly supported. While these funds are restricted for specific purposes, we are providing you with funding information. Should a fund need support to meet its obligations, the board may authorize the General Fund transfer into these funds. Additionally, the board may also authorize funds to be reserved under these funds for specific expenditures. For example, while we budget for routine maintenance as part of the General Fund, we also set aside funds for the need of deferred maintenance in Fund 14. Voter-approved general obligation measures funds are maintained under Fund 21 for phase one and phase two construction projects. Each fund is carefully monitored to meet its designated purpose, ensuring accountability and alignment with board priorities. Looking at next steps, in January, the governor's January budget proposal for 2526 will be published by 10th and various projection changes based on the three major revenue estimates for the state. In May, the governor revises the state budget again based on the tax revenues and other legislative proposals for the following year. As we learn changes for the following year in January, the district updates the budget stabilization plan utilizing the revised factors and prepares the second interim reports by March 15th. District starts preparing for the budget development process in collaboration with Educational Services and Human educational services and human resources in January after governor's budget updates and aligning budget with L K P priorities. Twenty-five, twenty-six L K P and proposed budgets are presented to the board at a public hearing in June and the following board meeting, the L K P and budgets are adopted before June thirtieth. And before I conclude, I would like to take opportunity to thank my fiscal team, leadership and support staff for putting together this report and helping us, you know, project it better and working together. So I thank them very much.
Thank you so much. Actually, before we get to board questions and comments, it's ten oh seven at this time. Do we have a motion to extend the meeting, let's say to eleven, just to be on the safe side?
Move it.
Or any discussion is, we should be done long before eleven, but just to be on the safe side. Do I have a second? Okay, so moved by trustee Pelley, seconded by trustee Thomas. May I have a vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all right. So now on to board member questions or comments. Do we have any, anybody has any questions or comments? No? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I do just have one, I guess, comment and that is with regards to, I think it's slide, I have to put on my glasses, nineteen, I believe, where you talk about the deficit spending of nineteen million dollars. And just to be clear, you know, there's obviously chatter out there sometimes and, and some panic about this idea of deficit spending implying that somehow we have no money and we're going into the red to do that. But obviously we have a very healthy reserve, correct, that we are. So when we settle those negotiations for certificated and classified, we had to backfill those salaries, right?
That is correct. We use some of the committed funds that were part of that ending fund balance. And when you use those committed funds, that is not new revenue, but it is an expenditure. So it, while you're not receiving new revenue, and again, the definition of deficit spending is that in that year, the revenue you're receiving, the expenditures exceed the revenue that you're receiving for that year. So we did use that money for the committed, which is where those adjustments were made.
Right, so we're not receiving money that year to pay for it, but we do have the money to pay for it in our reserves.
In our reserves and our committed fund. And again, that's why this is very important, these multi-year projections, to be able to look and make adjustments. And that is why we are funded in that way and are required to report on subsequent years so that we are able to make those adjustments with enough time so that it, we try to avoid the impact to students as most, as much as we possibly can by making those adjustments that need to be made.
Okay, right. So, so once we backfill, we pay for it, now we're moving forward next year, no deficit spending and, and the following year as well.
Based on our current assumptions.
Based on our current assumptions.
Yes.
Okay. And I do think that, you know, I mean, we have had an issue with our board not really being necessarily prioritizing competitive compensation. And I think that this year it really came to light when we lost a lot of staff and we had to bring in new staff and we needed to make sure that we had competitive salaries. And I think that that is fair. If we want to bring in talent and we want to have talent, we can't pay our employees a non-competitive wage. So thank you for explaining that. And, you know, I think that obviously investing in our employees is something that's really important. So any other questions based on that? Okay. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a positive certification for the first interim financial report for twenty-four, twenty-five, indicating that Orange Unified School District will be able to meet its financial obligations for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year and following two fiscal years and accept the twenty-four, twenty-five budget updates and changes as presented by staff. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Trust, trustee Glass, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Vane, seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Onto item nine C. Proposed revisions to board policies and bylaws, second reading. The district's board policies and bylaws are reviewed and updated periodically as new state and federal laws and regulations are enacted. The proposed revisions for the following board policies are presented for second reading and that's board policies oh four oh five oh as set forth in the agenda down to board policy sixty-one, sixty-one point one-one. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed board policy revisions. Do I have a motion?
Before you make that motion.
Yes.
If I could just make a comment here.
Yes.
So in the past, you've had this list, you know, do the first reading, the second reading. What we've done that's different here is we've added some asterisks with a mandate and a date next to it. These are board policies that are required by law. The others are optional, but if the board were to choose to change the language in these, then we would have to take it to legal counsel to make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to something that doesn't follow the mandate of the law. These are provided for us by C S B A as a template policy. They're reviewed by legal counsel. They take the laws, they apply it and come up with what these policies are. We modify them somewhat for O U S D. So these, you know, that's kind of where we're at with these. I do want to point out that for board policy thirty-five, fifteen on campus security, the second page, the last paragraph, I've been advised that there's a typo there. It says extend and it should stay extent. But other than that, that's a, I thank Dr. Whitmer for bringing that to my attention. But other than that, you know, we would recommend approval of these from a staff standpoint. Thank you.
And thank you for clarifying that in, in these, in this agenda items. So there's three, it looks like three this time around that are mandated changes. In other words, changes to the statutes that are absolutely required. And if we were to mess with them, then we would get in trouble. So we need to make sure that we do follow those mandates. With the change to board policy thirty-five, fifteen correcting the word extend to extent. Do I have a motion? Okay, trustee Yamazaki moved it. Do I have a second? Trustee Pelley, seconded. Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Onto item ten A, proposed revisions to board policies and bylaws, first reading. The district board policies and bylaws are reviewed and updated periodically as new state and federal laws and regulations are enacted. The proposed revisions for following board policies are presented for a first reading. And that is as listed in the agenda, board policy oh four one oh through board policy six one seven seven. And again, as superintendent Christensen indicated, there's two that are mandated, mandated changes. Other than that, do we have any discussion or changes by any of the trustees? Okay. This is just an information item, just a discussion item. So we can move on to the next item, which is ten B, superintendent search, discussion of hiring processes and direction to staff. And I believe that is superintendent Christensen or who's presenting that?
This is just an opportunity for the board to have a discussion amongst themselves about what, how you'd like to move this forward. There are certainly different options. We could, you could direct staff to fly the job. We could go through that process. You could hire a search firm. You could, you could go through a process to hire a search firm. So there are three different ways to go. There are search firms that you've used in the past, most recently Leadership and Associates when Dr. Whitmer was hired. So, you know, we're, I, I think you all need to discuss what kind of a process you want to see going forward, how involved with or community, without community, things like that. So if you could start that conversation, that would be helpful for us and that would give me some direction so we can kind of move this forward.
Sure. Okay. So none of us have actually done a superintendent search before. So the, really the number one question is, do we want to use a search firm or do we want to go in-house? What?
Oh, I was just saying I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. You're the only one, you're the only one that has. However, three of us last year went through the process of doing a search for a searched search firm, okay? So that is something we can do. We can do a search for a search firm, which will then cost us money and probably at least another month or two. Or if we want to use a search firm, we can go with leadership, leadership associates who we already contract with and then we can get the search moving. The other option is to not use a search firm at all and just do an in-house search, but I personally don't think that that's a great option. I think that we do need the assistance and the help. Leadership associates, based on our, and I can, I won't speak to it completely, but trustees Yamazaki and Page, in looking at the search firms that applied last year, I would say without a doubt that leadership associates far exceeds the qualifications than those that came before us and we already have that relationship. There are things that we can do to ask leadership associates to do a proposal and we can let them know the expectations that we have and what we want to do. And we could have them come back next month, right, with a proposal slash contract that we could approve if we want to. So I'll open that up to discussion. That, those to me seem to be the options. Do we go with a firm or do we not go with a firm? And if we do go with a firm, do we go towards leadership associates and then set forth some guidance to give to staff to have them come back with a proposal for us? Anyone? Bueller? Trustee Glass, Dr. Glass, do you have anything, any question or any thought on it?
Thank you. I think on one level, the leadership associates option is always going to be a good one. We already contract with them as you mentioned. I'm not personally, personally, I'm not against looking at other search firms as well to make a more robust option for us in January. But at the same time, I do not agree with an in-house type of mechanism. I think it's probably better to go outside. And then from there, possibly with the seven of us or however we want to do this, if it's an ad hoc committee or something of that nature, then we could come up with some specifics regarding what we look for. I'd love to include the community in this conversation as well. And then finally, hopefully have something before, what did we say, June thirtieth? So that, so that we can have this resolved, right?
Before Superintendent Christensen leaves us, we definitely.
That's the language.
I think we're, we're thinking it's probably a four to six month process. And my understanding of leadership associates is they have a vast network of people that, you know, it's really important that candidates trust the search firm as much as we trust the search firm. And I think that they have that reputation that's, that is good. So trustee Vane, any thoughts?
I like the idea of having this discussion after our study session on our governance and our vision and all of that because it seems like it would be helpful to have us aligned on that front before moving forward.
Trustee Yamazaki?
I'm just looking at my notes from last year and when Mr. Groom and Mr. Rivera presented, they said it was going to take three months to select a firm. That's not selecting a superintendent, but a firm to select the superintendent so that obviously would extend our timeline. And right now I know that there's a couple of school districts who have vacancies and so we would be competitive against them. And so that's something to consider as we think about it. They reached out to thirty-four firms back then and seven firms applied. And out of the seven, five of them did not specialize in school districts and it was frankly, you know, a waste of time for them and for us. So those are things that I just want us to consider as we go forward because we did this. And I strongly feel that leadership associate is one of the best and I would be comfortable with just going with them.
Trustee Page?
Thank you. So the superintendent is like the only person that we hire as a board and so it's really important, not only for all of us to be cohesive when making that decision, but also including so many stakeholders a part of that. And, you know, we've had many superintendents in the last two years. And so I'd love to have our next one not only be visionary, but stay with us and create the next generation of legacy for our students. With that, we need a lot of feedback and input, not just from our students, but also from parents and from both labor partners, just to be able to share essentially what they're looking for in a leader as well. Because once we have everyone share that decision with us, I think we'll have a leader who will stay long term.
Trustee Pelley?
Thank you. I agree with trustee Page in that I think it's important to get input from our community, from our staff, from our students, parents, our associations. I just think it's really important. This is a big decision. It's something hopefully that will last and I think it's, it's important that we are really thorough and I think going with a firm that we know and that we trust is important. I don't want to take time and, and try to find, you know, go through a search and probably not find somebody that we like as well or that we can trust. We've used them before. They did a great job getting us Dr. Whitmer. So I, I just feel like, you know, we have them already under contract. They're trusted. I had actually talked to some people up at C S B A, just curious who, who they use and that was just kind of who everybody uses. I also think the timeline is, is important because this is the time of year people are already starting to think about, about hiring. So I think it's important that we get that done, but I, I think we just start with, with the firm that we have.
Trustee Thomas?
Thank you. I completely agree with Dr. Glass. I do not think we should do in-house. I went through the process at a previous school district for assistant superintendent in-house and I fully agree with going with a outside recruitment agency.
Okay. Obviously it's really important that we get moving. We are going to be competing. Irvine's going to be hiring a superintendent. Laguna's, I believe, is going to be hiring a superintendent. So we're going to be in competition with some other school districts and I think it's important that we get moving and that we do that with a reputable firm. It's really kind of a two-step process. We're going to decide who we're going to use and then we have to work with, in this case, let's say leadership associates and guide them and tell them what we want the process to be and have them advise us on what, how that looks. I think every single person on this board wants community engagement, wants our stakeholders to have a say in it, wants community input and teacher input and employee input. I think we all want that. But until we're face to face with the firm that we're going to use, this conversation is really just kind of academic at this point. We need to get that firm on board. And then just so the public is aware, because this is our only employee, we as board members, we can contact people and we can encourage them to apply and use our search firm or leadership associates to vet those people. But, you know, we can always reach out to people, have them apply through our process. It is, it's an incredibly important decision and having a good pool of qualified people is the most important thing. And I think that's what's going to get us to where we need to be. So I think the direction is pretty clear in terms of maybe contacting leadership associates, having them put together a proposal for us to bring back and potentially a contract. And I don't know, we, if we want to talk about this in our January study session as well.
I think, I was going to say the, the next, you know, regular board meeting for action is going to be, I mean, we're meeting hopefully Wednesday, if you all approve that. And then I think it's the sixteenth of January and then a week later will be the regular board meeting. So at the sixteenth- So, at the 16th, the board governance workshop can also... You can talk about this as well. And they could, you know, we can, in the meantime, kind of tee them up, start that process from our end, and then either, you know, put it on the agenda or don't put it on the agenda, depending on the outcome of the governance workshop. And then, that doesn't mean that just because it's on the agenda, you can still interview them, have them... We'll come that evening and have them talk about their process and talk through it. And that may change what their proposal is. You may want more than what they're proposing, or you may want less. So... But it'll get the conversation started, and if it works well, then you'd be able to approve their contract, and they could get started right away. So, that would be the soonest. If you choose to punt, then we can punt, and that's fine. But that would give you the opportunity to have that conversation again during the governance workshop.
The January governance workshop study session. Does that sound... Sound good? Okay.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
We have direction.
You have direction. Okay. On to consent items, Item 11. Does anybody wish to pull an item? Okay. Consent items are acted upon all in one motion. However, any such item can be considered separately at a board member's request and will be acted upon following approval of the consent items. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'm sorry. I missed who it was. Okay. Trustee Page, thank you for moving. Do I have a second? Trustee Vane, second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Are we finally at public comment? Okay. We are now finally to public comment. Trustee Page?
Okay. So, we have three non-agendas, so that's three minutes each. And the first one up is Stephanie Kamacho Van Dyk, who I think left.
I believe she left. Okay.
All right. Good evening, President Erickson, trustees, superintendent, cabinet, and community mostly online. I am Greg Golander, the president of the Orange Unified Education Association. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Trustee Page. As president, you worked tirelessly and effectively to improve our district. Your strong leadership was needed to help us through a tough year. Thank you. President Erickson, OUEA hopes that you will continue this work of transforming our district through community and staff engagement and a strong collective vision. In this effort, I ask that the board encourages, supports, and expects that district leaders actively engage with OUEA and CSEA when developing and implementing programs and initiatives. We are the professionals in the classroom daily and can give insight to help the district's efforts. OUEA is ready to continue to collaborate with the district to improve student learning. And finally, is encouraging and hopeful to see a school board filled with pro-public education trustees. Your varied backgrounds are noteworthy. Your position on the board shows your commitment to our schools, our staff, and our community, and OUEA is looking forward to working with you to bring new and exciting changes to OUSD. Thank you for your time.
Joel Lindley?
Happy holidays.
Thank you. All right. Other business? Any other comments? All right. So, meeting is adjourned... Yes. I am sorry, Dr. Vane.
I just wanted to say that what an exciting week it's going to be with all of the holiday parties and performances, and I'm so excited for all of that, and I wanted to wish our secondary students good luck in their finals.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Meeting adjourned at 10:31.